Thank you. I always forget colder.
He's the Harrian.
Um, it's time for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Connie's gonna say the prayer today.
Our Father in heaven, how grateful we are for the opportunities that are presented to each of us. At this time as we gather, we ask that thy guiding hand might be with us, that we might make those decisions that are best for this hospital, for the staff, for our patients. Please bless our patients, that they might find comfort and healing. For these favors and blessings, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay. So this month again, I had multiple suggestions for the employee to honor for this month. And so this month, our employee is Kim Sharp. Now, I'm gonna page her, this very long paper. Kim, everybody knows, you guys don't know, Kim is the Quality Compliance Direct, Quality and Compliance Director. But not only does she do that, she chairs the Quality Committee. I'm gonna miss something, you know that, right? I tried. Manages credentialing, tracks the charts for peer review, manages HIPAA issues and training, and got her certification. Manages, I already said that, does risk management, HIPAA, and quality trainings for the staff. She teaches the CNA classes and she's working to make it a test center. She also created a process for signing up for the CNA classes, which was amazing. She does policy review and update, manages all complaints, manages Action Q, and does the follow-up for risk management, co-chairs the EMC, implemented fee trail for the surveys, does chart audits by the Gobs, CMS quality measures, she works with that, she works with Yellowstone, she's gonna come up with a new policy for litigation and quality, we'll see that soon. And besides that, if it's, if they, if somebody here needs something, Kim's there. Kim helps when she can in other places, if she has time, she works in the community, she's just like, you're all it, Kim. Thank you very much. And here's your list, should I forget?
You just didn't know how good you was, did you, Kim?
Well, see, people don't, people don't know everything that everybody does. I know. And I probably missed some, right? Do you have anything to say? Shocks, cries, or wasn't respected? I love doing that. See, we didn't shock her because she will come. Oh, you. No, it's okay. No, I said, when we, when you were picked, they said, we had to tell her. You kinda told me, but it didn't turn out. Well, we're very excited, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim.
So I, just so you know, I'm always open, and Randy is always open to, for suggestions and for, for people going forward. I, I find it to be very enjoyable to be able to really honor somebody once a month. I appreciate, I appreciate you. Any visitor comments? I don't think we have any visitors besides our guests. Any changes to the agenda or additions?
Yes. One, I noticed, and I don't have it pulled up, shame on me, that there was a section I, but would have the action, and I just thought of moving the I section up.
Here, on the minutes, me?
Yeah. There was the, the emotions and so forth, but then there was a...
Are you talking from the visitor?
No, it was from, um, talking about the board.
The minutes?
It was in the minutes.
In the minutes, okay.
That one's not that big of a deal, the other one is though. Um, and that one had to do with the foundation report.
Okay.
If you could make sure that it was not Weston County Health Services who would be paying for those people not attending, but the foundation, I thought that was a very important statement to do.
Well, goodness, it's been here, Denise.
Ease of it.
Okay, and, and we just also found there was a documentation of MRI and nothing after it, so we changed that to, uh, they have increased, if you can find that for me, I'd really appreciate it. Um, changes to this agenda, that the Durbin and Company are going to speak to us after we approve the agenda in the last minutes, and also I have to talk about the mandatory board training later on. So, can I get a motion to approve the, thank you.
Connie, can I have a question? Foundation case for what? I didn't touch, but here it is.
Yeah, in the notes, we were talking about the daddy-daughter.
Right, okay.
Dance, and for those individuals.
The foundation, but no.
Where were you putting the other issue, mandatory board training, where were you putting that?
At the end. At the end.
Your item for the future.
Before executive. It's probably old business. How about the end of old business? G. G.
Mandatory.
Mandatory training.
Under old?
Yeah. Cause we've just been waiting for the information. Okay. With these changes, can I have a, a motion to approve the, the minutes from the 21st of December and then the other, all the other meeting minutes?
I still move.
Second? Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Jamie, in.
I go in my mouth and the words came out.
Randy, would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Durbin and Company, Brent, Ronaldo.
Charlotte. Shawna.
And Tommy. So, uh, they can get a brief, uh, overview of what one of them does, and then what they can do for us, uh, down the road, from a financial perspective and, uh, from a audit perspective and cost report as well.
Great, thank you.
They've flown in from Texas.
Yeah.
Yeah, please do.
First, let us say we're glad to be here. Thank you for having us. We, uh, we were able to come into Rapid City and drive over to a beautiful place. Roy brought us back. Coming in, visiting. I just, thanks for having us. And we, we took a tour, Sandy took us on tour of the facility. What a beautiful place. We'll give a, a brief introduction to us and what we do while we're here. Maybe kind of the, we've known Randy a long time, many years, and have worked with him in various places and perspectives. So, um, when he called and said, I have a place in Wyoming, and maybe, or in Wyoming, maybe you can come out and visit the board, and I said, sure, absolutely. So, we are a, what we might call a smaller boutique-type financial consulting CPA firm. Um, we refer to ourselves, CPA firm, as Durbin and Company, the, the consulting branch we have, falls under the name Discovery Consulting. No difference between the two besides just a name. Same partnership, same staff, same people. Uh, we, we have discovery because of places like this, that maybe we, we can go outside of the state of Texas and do some work on the consulting side, where we don't have to go through the state board of accountancy at that company. So it allows us that kind of freedom to do a little bit on the consultant side, and maybe we could do it if we had to go through, just, just clear some of the bureaucracy of not having to go through the state board, so to speak. So, but other than that, the company is the same. We are three of eight partners in the firm. So we just, there's eight of us that lead the firm. We only have about fifty to fifty-five or so employees spread across the state of Texas. We are split between two locations, one of them you probably know, the DFW area, which is where Tommy resides. He's just outside of Fort Worth. And then Shawna and I are from the western part of Texas, Lubbock. And so if you, if you've heard of Amarillo, Lubbock, that, that area is where we do. So, so, but we do work all over the United States. We, while the large concentration of our hospital work is in Texas, we have hospitals in Oklahoma. We have, or have had hospitals in Louisiana, New Mexico. We have currently hospitals in Colorado, Tennessee. We work with, quite a bit with Vanderbilt out of Nashville. We work with Banner Health out of Phoenix and Tucson area. We've done work for Sacred Heart up in Seattle, University of Virginia, just a myriad of hospitals. So we, we do cover the entire group more, I guess what you'd call regionally based, but we do work nationally. So we're, like I said, we're glad to have the opportunity to work. Wyoming, we actually had a hospital, we did some work for, two or three years ago, south of Jackson Hole, and I can't remember the name.
Star Valley?
Probably, yes.
The ridge area.
Oh, okay.
You don't get any ideas. Star Valley.
So, um, we are just healthcare. We, we do a small amount of business in what you might call freestanding rural health clinic, FQHC-type work, but probably ninety-five percent, maybe more, of our clientele is hospitals. And so we don't do anything else besides healthcare. So we don't, we don't do, if we do a small amount of tax work, it's simply for the nonprofit tax work that the hospitals that we work with. And so, but other than that, we don't do any outside taxes, our concentration is more on the, the profitable perspective, operational consulting within regards of the financial operations and reimbursement. Ranging from obviously Medicare, but we do some strategic operational and financial analysis behind the advantage plans, Medicaid, supplemental funding, uncompensated care, all of that. But, but we wanted to share with you that we are all healthcare. So, we have different facets of employees within the firm. We have a, a contingent of the staff that just does financial audit, that's their expertise. We do, they, they, they heavily weigh in the knowledge and reporting aspect of the financial audit and the financial statements. Then we have another area of operation that's, that's all reimbursement. And within reimbursement, we have the ones that kind of focus on the rural healthcare and the critical access and the, the smaller community hospitals. And then we have the ones that also focus on the larger but tertiary facilities as well. So we cover both, both sides of healthcare. And like I said, we do Medicare, we do the Medicaid reporting. Really, we handle, if we were to just say, we handle all of the financial governmental reporting that a hospital has to do and is required to do, except on the billing side. And while we touch on the billing side, our expertise is on the billing. We, we kind of know that now because I'm expecting all of the government reporting. Handle on a regular basis, so we're very well versed, obviously, in the cost reports from many different angles. We have, within the reimbursement department, we have a department that does the enrollment, so we can do Medicare, Medicaid enrollment, traditionally certification. The individual we have in that area worked for, back up and talking about the background, we, we kind of intentionally brought in three or four different backgrounds. So we have employees that have the hospital experience, that have been CFOs at a hospital in the past. We have employees that have worked for a Medicare contractor in the past. So they're well versed in the cost report, all that, and then we have people that have come from the Medicaid side as well, and then we have the ones that have done consulting for long periods of time. We've worked in that arena too. So we, we kind of bridged the gap between the ones that have worked in the hospital and have the actual operational feet-on-the-floor experience in the hospital with the ones that have that same level of experience with the government. So, kind of intentionally built that to where we can reimburse them with all areas of hospital reporting. And that opened it up to these other two, I've talked a lot, but I'll give a provide for their self-pay.
I think from the reimbursement perspective, that's kind of my area, and one of the reimbursement partners of Brent, we like to partner with you, um, so it's more than just doing the report. I mean, anyone can do the report, but we really like to partner with you. We sometimes say we're the reimbursement department. You know, a lot of times you don't see that reimbursement department in a critical access facility, so that's where we come in. And we really help you strategically, have you thought about this, have you thought about that? Maybe we should look at this, maybe we should do that. I mean, anyone can put a number in a box. We like to go beyond that and really make sure that we're doing what's gonna maximize the reimbursement for you all. Um, from a reimbursement perspective. And then we can look at other things. I know y'all are heavily Medicare and self-pay, and you were talking about that earlier, that uncompensated care, and what does that look like? And that's where we like to come in. And y'all have talked about clinics and what y'all do at those clinics, and where are they? That's where we can come in and really talk through that. And we're more than just the phone call, that's why we're here. Um, we're small enough, yet we're growing. We never want to lose that face time. Face time is where you really get to interact and really learn about the facility and the people. And so we go beyond that as a company, we make sure that we're a phone call away or we're a visit away. So we take those walls out of it.
And that's where things like the tour and seeing the facility, seeing the hospital really helped. As Sandy was taking us through the hospital, we were each talking about various things, making little mental notes and paper notes to say, let's look at this, because it helps to see the square footage in the areas, I think that particular area is versus another. And how do you do your bills and allocate them? Those sometimes become numbers on the page if you don't see them. So it helps us to be able to see that, put that together, and so that is helpful, thank you.
For me, I lived in the world of audits for twenty-plus years, getting out of that, but I'm more on the financial reporting side of life. And we like to be able to work with hospitals in your kind of situation. We, we understand there's some thing that needs to be done, potentially that, and we've got a team that can do that. We've got some ex-CFOs of hospitals that we employ, and that's what we like to do. The lady that we would like to work with you, she was CFO for twenty-five or thirty years, and she became a CEO. Then she decided to retire, and six months later she got bored. And she calls and said, and I work with y'all. We had, we had worked with her on the other side of the table, we were, we were their auditing firm and, you know, reimbursement firm for their, for her for years, and how she works for us, and she's been great. And so we have a team that we, we put into those, this type of situation, come in and help do cleanup. I mean, that poor Patty spent nine months with a hospital cleaning up twenty-seven banking accounts that had been wiped out for eighteen months. So, you think you're the only one? But you know, we've, so we've got a team that we can put into that kind of role to help clean up and then moving forward, you know, kind of help be a, what we're gonna call semi-CFO from a remote standpoint, but they're not here forty hours a week, you're not paying forty hours a week, you know. The goal for us, we want to work with you, but we also want to help train staff, local staff. That's really the goal for us, is to say, okay, we can help you get cleaned up, caught up, but then we want to start teaching your own internal people to where eventually, we really work ourselves out of a job, but pretty, really honest. Is it so much better to have somebody locally and, you know, that can be there where it needs to be? But that's kind of what we, that's what we're working on, and that's kind of what I do.
And then at that point, we provide the strategic analysis and the things that are necessary. If you need to, we can do that, we can continue to do. The assistance and helping filing the cost report. We, we can do that, we do all pieces of the cost. You have a lot of hospitals that we file, prepare and file the cost report. We also have the hospitals that prepare their own cost report, we review it. We have those that we provide strategic analysis, even in certain sections of the cost. So we, we kind of cover all of the different depths, levels of that. So, that tells you a little about us, we all have.
We do have a third location, Brent forgets about, it's Waco, Texas. Yes, I promise you, you've all heard about Waco. I lived there for many years, and I was glad when I left. Um, but no, that's, I have to give, and actually, we did do a rebrand. We're no longer Durbin and Company, we're D and Co. We took out the urban.
So we are D and Co, LLP versus Durbin and Company. Um, and then discovery analyst and consultants. Whereas before, you probably knew us as Discovery Healthcare Consulting Group. That just changed January first, twenty twenty-four, so we ourselves are getting used to it. In fact, I went to pull out business cards, and we still have old business cards, not as how new as it is, so.
So, what we like to do is hear from you all though, too. We, we, we love to talk with you about what we do, but to us, the more important piece is you all, and what, what y'all need. And, you know, what are you looking for if we were to just? We were to just ask the question, what are you looking for in a consulting firm and a cost report? Financial audit, what are you looking at? And obviously, like Tommy said, we've talked to you all about the cleanup of some of the financial records, it's probably first and foremost. Shawna shared that we like to partner with you and provide that. The cost report is not only a, a reporting form, it's not just a form that you fill out and say, okay, we've completed. There's a, there's a whole world of strategic analysis that goes into either, well, both before and after, because there's a lot of trending analysis that you could do, so on and so forth. Like to, to dive into that, use that as operational consulting to say, why don't you finally think about this this way?
Do you monitor that cost report during, during that timeframe?
We do.
Because one year we had to pay a million dollars back, so.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's not fun.
And critical access and EBSL flows, I mean, one year you have a huge receivable, the next year a payable, and that is something. And I was just on the phone last week with the CFO. One, we like to do education a lot, especially in the critical access world, because it's completely different.
I think ours transpired when we cut down rooms and square footage, you know?
Well, and square footage is something that, you know, that's part of the reason why we take that tour, because you can learn a lot, and you can see this area we might need to revisit square footage, and is the square footage in the right spot? And that, that's gonna impact reimbursement. But those, those cost report receivables and payables, and the same message that I told that CFO, hey, here's your receivable, now let's talk about when we need to do an interim cost report, because you're likely gonna have a payable next year, and this is why. To us, it's more than just, hey, your report's due in November.
Right.
Hey, we'll see you again next September. It's an all-year, every-year communication part of shit.
And that's what Shawna was saying, we consider ourselves, a lot of times, we're the person who's part of the hospital, and though we're not here in employee, we still considering the, the proverbial term. Is made a lot worse, that's a surprise. And so if we could do the things like interim cost reports, you're in here, say, hey, this is happening, and it looks like, whether it's increase in days, or drop in cost, or increase in charges, or whatever might cause that overpay. If we come to you at six months, you know, if we came to you at this time of year and said, for this fiscal year, it looks like you can possibly have a large payable. That payable is between the range of seven to eight hundred thousand. Well, at this point, you've got eleven months to plan. Yeah, eleven, six, yeah. So, you know, you, you kind of can consider that. Okay, well, first of all, are there things to do this year to minimize it? And, and then secondly, it's not, it's not a surprise to you. And so what we hear from boards most often is, we don't mind the payable, but we don't, we do mind the surprise. We don't, we don't like to be surprised at, at the time when the cost report's ready. Wow, we say, oh, by the way, it's, it's a large payable. So, uh, but yes, we, that's a great point. We work with you through the year to, we're, we're not one of those firms that just does the cost report. We work with you throughout the year, especially critical access. We do a lot of interim, or interim projections, not where that report's filed, but where at least you have it as a management tool.
Right.
And it's prepared, we can look at it, minimize it, say, there's no reason to file this, but you're what it was.
There might be a reason to file, not something that we don't. I mean, most of our hospital CFOs, CEOs, and even some of the business owners, they have our stuff. That's just kind of the company that we operate and run, and that's the staff that we have. Everyone's very personable. And it's about the education, in truth, at the end of the day, making sure that you're, you're doing things the best you can, so that we can take care of the patients.
Well, that was my ask, other question, you are aware of critical access hospitals, that's.
We currently do, my name is Joseph. Seventy or eighty.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say eighty-five. Part of it.
Which probably, just to tell you the size, we probably touch in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty to a hundred and seventy-five hospitals. And probably half of those are critical access. A large contingent or, you know, numbers-wise, we're a whole lot stronger and more numbers in rural. We do have the urban tertiary side that works well, and we work with probably twenty-one of those too. But, but numbers-wise, we're, we're up a lot.
Banner House is pretty big.
Yes.
So, um, are you familiar with Epic Systems?
Yeah, actually, one of our facilities uses Epic and Meditech, which was the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about Sage?
Sage is not one that I am familiar with, but we do have, so something that we, none of us, I think, had mentioned, is we do have a digital services team. And so that kind of came through the uncompensated care and supplemental funding model that Texas has. And so we are able to go in to a system, whether it be Meditech or CPSI or Cerner, I mean, there's a laundry list down that I can list. And we can pull data, and we can run reports, and we can look at it. And we do it very specific right now to Medicare bad debt, and putting together that total bad debt listing that's required for us to. It's not a requirement for critical access, but for PPS it is, charity care, um, that's why we do it. They are very familiar with that, and so that's something.
Contact our people, just have them pull a report too.
Yes, yes, yes. And a lot of times with Epic, you know, if it's something specific that we're needing, they don't have to access it, but we can say, hey, here's a query that we built for another facility. And y'all can use that.
It's up to y'alls comfort level and platforms, but what we would tell you about that, because our IT, the digital services department is very well versed in that. They have the systems to, to pull that data within the guidelines, so.
Another question.
We store it, we have storage facilities, everything's very simple. Even the larger hospitals, we, we pull reports directly from some of the large facilities that we do. While it's a process to get set up, usually it works well after it's set up, we just, we just go into the hospital system and pull the record that, or whatever reporting that we're looking at. Our stat out depending on reporting, you know, if it is uncompensated care we're looking at, that's a certain subset of data. If it's Medicare bad debt, that's another subset of data. That record, okay. Like Shawna says, they're very good at, well, bridging the gap between the hospital and systems, but, but it is all authenticated through HIPAA clients.
Good questions.
Have you done clinical, clinic cost reports as well?
Yes.
And long-term care?
Yes.
For Medicaid?
What about, I might be showing my ignorance here, what about, um, differences as far as Wyoming and Medicaid?
It's like Slim's got a little paper cut.
It's nothing.
Come on, man. No, I'm gonna make you tell me.
Hey, kidney transplant.
When, dude, I didn't know you were sick.
I was donating it.
You gave your kidney to a complete stranger?
Saved his life.
And save a life by being a living organ donor on matchingdonors.com.
What about, um, differences as far as Wyoming and Medicaid versus Texas or all the other states?
Yeah, and, and that's a great question. Yeah, and, and that's a great question. Each state is different. And we can tell you right now, we're, we're not well versed on Wyoming, Medicaid. We don't have hospitals here, but that would be one thing that would, would become well versed on within a short amount of time. We, we deal with enough states Medicaid, um, programs and practices that. While they're all different, there are similarities between those. And there's really, I don't know, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, so there's really within Medicaid. There's about five or six different overall concepts. And they're still either going to pay cost or some derivative cost, or they're gonna pay fee sketching. Some derivative of fee sketching. Or they're gonna pay some percentage of charges, or they're gonna pay, you know, there's, there's only about five or six different mechanisms. Once we determine that, each of them have their own little reporting. And, uh, and, and education that you might have to go through to file those reports and all this stuff. But, um, I use Vanderbilt as an example in, in Nashville. And Vanderbilt has hospitals in Tennessee, but they also have a few hospitals in Kentucky. And they're adding those all the time. And so they wanted us to file this year, they wanted us to file reports for Kentucky. And so we just went in and did some research, found out what was required. So, so that while each hospital in each state is different, it's a great question. That doesn't, we don't have any reservation about either from a willingness standpoint or an ability standpoint to file. Like I say, it all kind of falls into a general context, so.
That's a good question. I mean, that's the beauty of us being strictly in healthcare, really, is healthcare is always changing. And so we have to stay on top of research and changes and what's coming down the pipeline, regardless of where we're at. So, something that we like to do and we kind of task people with that all the time. So.
Yeah, one of the things we've, we, on that note, one of the things that we do have is, is education kind of mentality. So, for example, every year in August, when Medicare comes out with what they call their final rules for the next year, which is the federal regulation for that next year. We divide that and have someone go read it. And, or some ones, most of the time, go read it, because there are, there are little things in that, that, I don't know. Need to know about. And if it impacts your hospital, we will come back to you and say, hey, here's an opportunity, or here's a regulatory change, or whatever. One of the, another area we haven't mentioned that Shawna leaves is price transparency. The whole provision of price transparency reporting that, uh, you've got hospitals, that's other states, but you've got hospitals in Charleston.
And West Virginia.
West Virginia, several that are just specifically price transparency clients. That's, that's what we do with that. I think about that because that's one of the areas that regulatory provisions have changed a lot. And so we, we, we just have to top it. So we're here to, to read and interpret regulations is not, that's just something we do on a regular basis. So we, we keep, keep up with those from a state perspective, as well as all the different federal programs and so on. And when they read the regulations, we come back and say, okay, it's, it's where are the provisions that we, that we need to consider? To do, so.
Harry?
Yeah, two questions.
Yeah.
Uh, who's your fiscal intermediary in Texas?
Uh, Novitoss Solutions.
The second question is, we're pretty small potatoes. Why are you interested in a very small fish?
Yeah, that's a good question. Welcome. And first.
I would actually tell you that you're not.
You're right, you're right in our, what we do.
Truthfully, a lot of the facilities that we work with look just like y'all, um, truthfully. So.
Just like the small potatoes.
We do.
Yeah, I do.
And gone a little better, like school.
We get to build relationships with our clients. I mean, I've been doing this for twenty six years. I have friends all over the state of Texas that I've met because of my relationship. I wouldn't have a relationship with a banner or an Oshner or L and Shu.
We don't, yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of what we do.
Don't get us wrong, we like those facilities. I mean, the Vanderbilts and the banners and the Oshers, they're great to work with. Your relationship is different with them. They have their own reimbursement departments. You're working with their reimbursement departments a lot of times. Um, it's a different relationship versus coming in here and a lot of our other facilities, they don't have that. And so they're hungry for that knowledge that we do have. And a lot of times there's, you just learn a lot. Um, you know, you get the tours and facilities like this, you don't get that in those type of facilities. The community knows when you're in town. They don't know when we're in town, when we're up there. It's, it's just different.
And I, I'd also add our relationship. I mean, that, that's, you know, that shows you the relationship. There's, there's, that's indicative of the relationship we have. He called and said, I'd like to be able to come visit this. He said, absolutely, we'll be there. So, so, and we've, we've had that relationship since you were working close to.
Close to telling you. And you know, what the board was looking at was true financials in a timely fashion, uh, from, you know, financials from closing, from our conciliation. And looking at reimbursement and billing and looking at our rural health clinics, our three forty B, our retail pharmacies. And we discussed there probably additional money that we're missing if we switch to the hospital side, which we had talked about. At other hospitals that we, we were at, uh, so, you know, we want, they want true financials. They, they, they want to have access to, to where the money is, where the money's management, what we're being reimbursed, is the cost report right, is the audit right? But we also want education to the board, for the board, but also for our fiscal service department, our business office. Uh, because they have lacked that for many, many years, and so has everybody else. So I think the training, the education that you guys can bring forth, but also getting us where we need to be here in the next. Hopefully, just a couple of months instead of six months out, I think it's going to benefit us, but benefit the community, benefit our patients, but benefit our, all of our departments as well.
Yeah, I think mine, yes, my needs are very simple. I want true numbers that I can go away with and feel confident and comfortable that those numbers are real. And that we can work from, from that plateau and then move forward.
Because we need to know where financially we are, so we can make decisions. I mean, you know, so.
And it's important for the community because we're responsible to them, um, being the way that we are. And, um, we need to make sure that we have clear answers and understand what's really going on.
And stay solvent.
Yeah, because we, we do hit the paper quite often. They don't have an answer, they're, they're, they're at a three point two million dollar loss. Well, we were that, if we were that, that big of a loss, there's no way we can have the money we have in the bank, plus make payroll. Uh, plus pay our accounts payable and everything else. So, you know, false advertisement, uh, false financials are being put out there or have been. And we get that every week. Uh, and, you know, the board has been getting it for longer than I've been here. So we just want to make, clear that up and move forward in the right direction.
And so when we have true financials, we can, our employees will have true financials and the community will have true financials, where their money's going. So, and at this point, you know, confidence is low.
Yeah.
Not with you guys. The business today.
And I ha, and I've worked with different auditors and financial people across the United States. And Blue and Company would have been one of them that we talked about. And, and Durbin I've worked with, and I have the most, I mean, they're very respectful and honest and Christian people. Uh, and that's why I decided, hey, let's look at Durbin, let's look at Brant. And, uh, I've known them all and Florence, and here, but Florence is a great lady too, I've worked with over the many years as well. And she used to work for CMS as well. So, uh, she knows CMS quite well and the people, uh, that run CMS can get us, uh, things I have gotten in a week that would have took six months. And, uh, just, just very great people.
And you asked about the contract. Texas, we have several people that have worked either previous or current in Texas. Florence is one of those, she was, she does our enrollment, she leads the enrollment certification department. Because she was actually the director of enrollment for Medicare. So we, we kind of took her and said, okay, let's, let's let her do the enrollment, because she's gonna know it the best. She's done it for twenty five years.
Yes, she's.
Before she gave to us.
She's a great lady.
And she's one of those that's very personable too, likes to build relationships with us. Not only am I doing this for, why are we doing this? Is it good for you, so to speak, you know, to go in that direction?
And it's always the same team of people that the hospital would work with?
Yes.
So it's not like somebody switch out, go on here too?
We try really hard to keep the same team with, beginning of the relationship. So there might be times that we add in someone new because we're growing and we're adding in new people and training them. But we try to keep who you work with the same as long as we can. Um, there's a relationship there that gets built. And essentially, once you've laid eyes on a facility, it's, it's just different.
And I, I think with, with these, or I like to say, Blue and Company I've worked with too. If Piper has a question for Brant or Tommy or Florence, she can pick up the phone and call. Uh, if a board member has a question and they get consensus with the rest of the board, the board can pick up the phone and call, you know, anybody. And, and get an answer. Uh, or if I have a question, I've always picked up the phone, whether it be nine o'clock at night or ten o'clock at night, somebody answered, so.
Yeah, we, that's a great, we do try to keep the same, for, for the most part, the same staff. We, we're just like every other company, we do have turn of the page. We try to minimize that. We try to place those people into positions, just to give you an example, it's been some time ago, but one of our IT guys was leaving because his family situation. He moved to Seattle, he moved from Dallas to Seattle. He liked us enough that he said, can I still work with you? Oh, I do IT, I sit behind a computer. And he worked in Seattle for a split.
Two years.
Two to three years before he, he eventually went off. But, but, uh, we, we kept him for a while because he was good, he seemed to like us. So, so, so we try to make those things work, where, you know, we, we, we mentioned the three offices we have. But we have an individual, we have an individual in San Antonio that works for us. We have one, actually, the one that Tommy referred to earlier is not in any of the offices. She's down, just outside of the Houston area. So we, we, we try to find those people that are good at what they do. And break down the walls of location. And we do that with clients too. The location is not a barrier. Like that we can. Go across the state of Texas.
One, one thing I did appreciate just was, um, Tommy, you saying that, uh, that you want to teach people. So we, I mean, especially it, it just, you're just really, I'm just, we want to.
Well, for us, again, we like to teach ourselves out of a job, if that makes sense. It's only fair to facility. We were, we were just thinking about it. We want to try to teach you to where, if you've got any especially new staff, we see it a lot of times with young accountants that come in. They don't know what a cost report is, they don't know what Medicare is, they may know dividends and credits all day long, but they have no clue. And healthcare is just a special niche. So our goal is to teach them up to where in two or three years, well, then they're calling, they're calling Patty once a week or once a month. Hey, I don't understand this, instead of twenty to thirty hours, that's our goal. And as an example of that, Shawna and I are doing a board education next Friday for a hospital. It's all day, we have a.
It's a critical access.
It's critical access education for the board and key staff of. I, I, I was talking to Todd here earlier and said, you know, we like to answer the question for the board. How do we get paid? The key staff, because you, I mean, it's a simple question, but you would be amazed at the complexity when you dive into critical access reimbursement. There's a lot that goes into the answer for that question. In that, in that education, we, we don't, we don't teach you the cost of work. That's, that's not your job to know the cost of work, but it is, it is as a board's consideration. It is kind of a consideration, is it better to purchase or lease? Or if we have floating nursing staff between ER and routine, how is that handled on the cost report? And what is the better way they? Those kinds of considerations are what we do. So we love education, love to provide education to both key staff and, and the boards and all level leadership. It just, it helps to be able to answer those questions. How do we consider our reimbursement? The things that are focused on at board level for making decisions, is what we hear that.
So if you were to come in. Long term, once you get us cleaned up, straightened out, would we still have to have a CFO or comptroller or something?
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think the goal would be to have somebody in-house that's doing a lot of, you know, base for association, those types of things. And then we can come in and help with any big issues and make sure the financials are ready by month, 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 you know, next month. It's really what do you want? Again, it goes back to what do you want as a board? You know, we want to help, we want to help get cleaned up, trained, but we also want to see, we, I've seen your board packets. It's interesting, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Well, I saw something that was presented to, given to me, I considered a board packet, maybe it wasn't. There were a lot of financial statements in there.
There's a pack of papers.
Fair enough. I would, I would call it interesting. But for me, what I wish would be is, what do you want as a board?
Simple.
I mean, obviously, balance sheet income statement, that kind of stuff is common sense, right? You need that, but how much data do you want behind it? We have, we have boards that get a balance sheet and income statement and a couple of other things to take care of. Then we have boards that get books. I mean, actually, I'll have iPads.
I want books, she wants them.
So it really will definitely want. And we can help. We can help develop that and help make sure it's, it's put together in whatever way you want. Because at the end of the day, it's what you guys want, it's not what we want, it's what do you want?
So you bill by service then, right? I mean, how does that work? How to?
Well, it's kind of like, but I mean, we can do a project fee based on certain things, or we do an hourly. Okay, you know, connected, depends on it, like, I'll give an example of a cost report. You know, if we did the twenty four cost report, the fee would be X.
It's more a project.
Yeah, it's more project based, the cleanup and that kind of stuff, it's, it's hard for me to say it's gonna cost a dollar or ten dollars, because we don't know, we don't know yet as far as how bad it is right now. You go, we, we love project based fees. It's easier for us, it's easier for you guys, and it makes our world, I mean, it really makes our world easier, but we just have to get to that point.
So would you say the trend with critical access hospitals across the United States? Uh, from a financial perspective and from, uh, the long term, with the way CFOs and even CEOs are today. Uh, with a turnover rate of about one point one eight, is there tenure? Are most critical access hospitals going remotely with a CFO and somebody in-house to manage the day-to-day operations of the financial or fiscal service department? Where you guys would report out, say, once a month through the board remotely? Or, or how does that look, uh, for me else?
I don't know, I mean, we're, we're seeing it, I don't know if we, I would call it a trend, but we are.
I do.
Okay. Um, but we're definitely seeing, and the problem is, if you got a great CFO, they're never allowed to leave. They lock them back and they don't want to leave.
Right.
So you're so.
Well, we, we know that.
It's very hard to find somebody. I mean, honestly, if I'm this, if they hadn't, didn't grow up in a small town, they may not want to be in a small town. And so it's hard to find those people. So, yes, we're seeing that. We work with, I mean, we, we work with hospitals, we also work with some, um, external interim CFOs that, you know, they do remote work. We've got one lady that she's got, what, five or six now hospitals now in and around Texas. She, she's actually built her own little team. She's gone and stolen accounts from different places. And now she is interim CFO for at least five of our six hospitals, some of them are same.
Because, I mean, we got intelligent people here, we got Piper that does a lot of the financials and the reporting of the stats. I mean, we got, uh, Sandy in her department, uh, that does a lot of the finance, but I think there's a little education for everybody, not even, you know, including the board, but also the departments that are going to. Uh that does a lot of the financials, but I think there's a little education for everybody, not even, you know, including the board, but also the departments that are going to be. Do a lot of the reporting and submitting a lot of things to you, we go that route. I think that would be our best, best route to go, just because. The what, the turnover of CFOs and is it, you can't find, even Casey Peterson said, they're not out there. And if you got one, you're gonna keep them, uh and if you don't have one, you're gonna pay dearly. Uh and you still might not get the right person or that person may be gone after six months because. Somebody else is gonna hire them for two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So you really don't know the unknown, and I just think after reading, you know, Becker's Healthcare Review, A C H E. And everybody else, small hospitals are going remotely with CFOs.
Or didn't help from the Congress cars, cut our money.
And I think with the right education, I think, and it wouldn't take long for everybody to get up to speed, I really don't, don't think it would be.
Anybody else?
Great questions.
We enjoy interactive boards.
Yes.
You don't have to worry about that here.
We ask for questions.
And I know the big question is, so, you know, we had talked about on the phone, Sandy and I. Talked about, okay, we've got six months that we've got to make sure the books are closed, but then we have some reconciliations to do as well. I mean, what do you think that would cost, just off the top of your head, to close six months? And then, I'm, I'm, I mean, what you think on, on the reconciliation, Sandy?
There's some that are caught up, there's some that are out three months.
We've got ten accounts that need to be reconciled.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be honest with you, that's the hard part, because we just don't know. And so I hate going in and saying it's gonna be a dollar. And it's really ten, if that makes sense, I mean, our goal would be to, for the cleanup, I mean, Patty, Patty, uh. She would be the lead as far as she's, and she's got more experience as CFO than I. She would be the lead for this and our goal would be, okay, Patty, you're gonna do this for the next two months or whatever it takes, get caught up. And then we'll go into, you know, uh, you know, I would, I would hope twenty hours a week would be my goal, once it's cleaned up for Patty. And it may be a little bit more, it may be less, if it gets to that point, it'd be less. So for a fee, I, it's hard for me to say, I mean, I don't wanna close a thousand dollars and it could be ten, if that makes sense. It's very difficult, not to try to hide the ball from you, it's just unknown for us.
But here's what we will tell you. Our fee structure, we, we have. I'm not gonna say as many fee structures as what we have hospitals, but close. We're very flexible. Yes, we have a business to run. And we have to cover our costs and y'all understand that. But we're also not there to, to overcharge you. We, we understand and take very serious, but if we are not within the market value of, of charging. Then y'all don't need us. And so we, we do have hospitals that, you know. Will have regular communication about the fees that we charge, now we try to, we try to put, same, Tommy's saying, we don't, we just don't know, right? What we would recommend is maybe that we do an assessment for you and we look at it and, and we kind of. Build those parameters. Maybe, maybe what we do is say, let's do a, and I'm just gonna throw a number out there. We do talk about it, like I say, we're very open, we, we believe in open communication, and when we say that, we believe in relationships, open communication. And B structure is one of those areas, and so, uh so I'm gonna put a number out there. And, and maybe we just say, let's do five thousand dollars official fee, just to put assessment. Build in the hours and after that five thousand dollars, we can come back to you. So and, and that really the assessment would just, the principle of that would be to cover our costs. Of paying someone to go dive into it and look at it. And then we could say, okay, h- how big is the project? How, how big is the element that we need to, to, to tackle? And, and then we can get a little better perspective, what that B structure would be and we can come back to you and say, okay. We've done the analysis, we've done the, the assessment and we appreciate you covering our costs for doing that. Um the assessment would not be for us to make money, if you will, it would, it would be just to cover some of the cost that we have. And um we could build whatever that number is. And we didn't talk about that, but I think that would be a viable number, just. I'm sorry.
It's not five thousand dollars.
I have to open the door.
To cover the cost of us, of us diving in and looking at the bank reconciliations, seeing what's there. And let's look at the monthly financials.
And what it would cost to close the six months, do the, you know, the, the two reconciliations. And then you have a better feel what it's gonna take a month to produce true financials to the board. Uh on a remote basis.
Exactly, I can't see how you can do it any other way. You can't put a number on it, yes.
We have our cost report done this year.
Sure.
It's been filed, right?
And we also have our audit, we're working on our audit, which is six months, al- almost, yeah.
Have they, have they done fieldwork or are they on that process?
They just started.
Yeah, they weren't coming on size.
Oh, is it all remote now?
Yeah, it's all remote.
Yes. First time I've seen that.
This is the first time they've done it this way, the new firm we've used, this is a new firm we went with this year. Yes, this is a firm we haven't used for the audit before, they're out of Seattle.
They recommended them, I mean, they had.
But we had never used them before.
And that assessment would include the cost report too and reimbursement, so we would do the financial piece and kind of look at where you are with the. That just gives us and you all a perspective. Where, where does the project need to go?
So we know if this cost report is valid or not.
Yeah, and we have looked at prior cost reports to see what reopenings are available, depending on NPR day.
And we've done a little bit of that.
And we've already kind of looked, but we don't know why they were filed the way they were filed, so we'd wanna dive into it before, before we say.
We had talked about twenty one and twenty two and we had looked at uh the pharmacy side that we think we can make more money on. If we get it this way than it was done previously, so.
And the clinics, we have some questions on the cost report.
For meals, nursing home and the hospital, there's just, you can file a cost report a lot of different ways. And making sure that it's done, one, the right way, but maximizing rates of the outlet.
And, and the thing about the cost, we were talking about it during. We see the face of the cost. We don't see the work papers, the area and the strategic part that goes behind, and there may be reasons for. We don't know that, we just, it's, it's, the cost report is very much like an onion. And all we see is the top layer. And so start feeling back those layers that may be a whole lot more reasoning behind why it's filed that way. Than what we can see, just looking.
Good or bad?
Well, I think our cost report's been done by Casey Peterson for the last.
At least eight years, maybe?
And like Shawna says, that's, you can file, there's a lot of different ways to file a cost report, a lot of different ways to, to. Structure of the data.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
It's better than I thought it was gonna be when I was talking about the split.
Yeah, well, when I talked to Alicia a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at maybe seven tops. But we're up to nine, po- potentially ten, we had a new kid move in, um that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now. You know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start, so that's gonna put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not gonna win a lot of duels, because we don't have anybody over a hundred and sixty pounds. So, uh you know, we're gonna give up forty points.
Right.
In every duel's me, so obviously it's gonna be tough to make that up, we do have some good returners.
You get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down and. You can give people a run for the money. Probably gonna get in trouble for that one too, but. Evvies, get out there and, and go wrestle.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
I was like, this is my idea, it was all my idea.
It was thirty five below.
Well, I'm gonna own it.
Tell me it's just pretty in the summer.
Black Hills.
You come in May and June, right, and maybe sometimes.
Certainly July, if we came, that gets us out of the Texas heat.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So are you thinking five thousand is a new assessment, is that what you're thinking?
Get started.
To get started?
We can get there, we can, we can get a long way into.
Yeah, and, and the other thing we can tell you too, I mean, if we, if, if we quote a number. We, ultimately we build on ours. And so if we, if we get in and it is a whole lot more efficient and a whole lot faster than what we believe it to be. Number out there and adjust the fee. Simple as that, that, that again falls into the market value, overcharging it doesn't mean any of this. So, so we'll, you know, if it, if it costs us three thousand to do the assessment, we'll not bill you five thousand. We'll bill you three thousand, so whatever is our role, you know, if we build. The five thousand, we'll roll that extra into something else or whatever, so.
Or, or if you, if you get.
Partway into it about, oh, my land, this is way more.
I don't think we're that bad.
I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, I understand.
Just so y'all know, in, in all of our engagement letters, we have the phrase in there, I'm not, I'm gonna paraphrase it so you don't know. It says, um if the fees are more than what we've estimated, because again, it's an estimate of fees, we don't know where we're gonna run into that with walls. But if we do, the engagement says, we will visit with you about that before we ever charge. So again, that goes back to the surprise thing, you don't get a surprise, you don't like getting the surprise. So we would come back to you and say, or if it's something on the cost report, we say, well, we've got something else. It's going to, you know, get there, it's gonna exceed the value that we told you. But the value to you is, you know, if we can bring you back fifty or a hundred thousand dollars in cost report. But it's gonna cost us a couple of thousand to do it, we're probably gonna say, yeah.
But, but also Brant on, also, let's say there was a mistake or there was additional money found on twenty one and twenty two cost report. So we could refile that cost report and recoup that money.
This is the time soon on that.
Depending on the NPR day.
Right.
And that's another one that the fee schedule is flexible, I mean, if y'all like the idea of us saying, let us look at the cost reports. We won't charge you. Except for maybe a performance fee at the end, if we bring something back, we could do that. If, if, a lot of hospitals like that, a lot of them don't, so we, we're very flexible on that, we understand both sides. A lot of people like that, we're not out any cash flow. Until they find something, and then they're gonna bring us value, we're just gonna provide that a piece of that value. And it would be a small piece, we're not the, we're not the firm that's gonna charge you thirty three percent. But we don't do that. That would be a normal, like, reopen fee. Or if you would prefer to say, if we reopen the cost report, y'all just go reopen it, we're gonna pay you an hour and a rate. And if it takes you eight hours to do it, we'll pay you eight hours to do it, if it takes you twenty, we'll pay you the twenty, a lot of hospitals would do that. So we're very flexible on that, and we wanted, again, that comes back to what y'all want, we would talk with you. We're fine with any kind of rate that you, and again, understanding, and y'all do. We're a business, we have to cover our costs.
When can you start?
And I think that's a valuable question, so say the board agrees tonight to go and move forward with the assessment. How, where could you start and how long do you think the assessment would take? From what I have seen, I don't think with Piper's knowledge, Sandy's knowledge, everybody else, I don't think the assessment would, would take that long, really, I don't think it really would.
I can have Patty on a call next week with you guys, or I can bring Patty up here, whatever you want. And say, I, I think next, I'm speaking, I'm pretty sure next week, we can have Patty either onsite or on a call going. I need five hours and we're gonna go down, we're gonna go down your balance sheet. We're gonna go, here's your balance sheet, where's the reconciliations, you don't have them, we know we gotta do it, we could start that next week.
I think our contractual is.
You're talking about your allowances, contractual allowances? Just based on what I looked at, for the trial balance I got for six thirty. I, I just made some notes on the fly out, I would wanna look at some stool, and that's something we can do as well, you know. That trial balance is six thirty, I know you've got an audit going on, the auditors will probably beat that up three ways from Sunday. But I would like for our digital team to come in and pull some data, or you have your team run reports, go and look at collections, and that way we can kind of true it up. And it also gives you ammunition, say ammunition, gives you help in working with your auditors. Good or bad, right? And we like to do that, I mean, insights, Tony, when you go look at seven months collection, say, well, we actually collected two million, you're saying that AR should be one million or whatever. That's a great thing, a great tool that we can do pretty quickly.
And I can tell you just what, we have looked at on the pharmacy side, switching it, the five thousand doesn't compare to all the money that. We could recoup on that side, but not even near, so.
Retailer, in-house, retail.
Yes, we could start.
It's supposed to be beautiful here next week.
We could fly into this airport because of weather and orientation on the flight, but, but normally if the weather's good.
I would say you're gonna have to call us to get right. No Uber, no taxi, no, no. But that's not a problem, it's not that far.
Except March twenty third, we will have limousine service.
It's very nice of you to come.
Yeah, yes, I appreciate it.
We are all wearing thermals underneath our clothes.
My husband puts a coat on.
I do. What do you, what do you want? Yeah, Jamie, what milligram do you want?
Yeah, Jamie, what milligram do you want?
I'd like an extra strength.
Yes, don't worry.
Melissa went to get some. Okay.
We're moving on. Two strictly initiatives and the finances for so far.
Well, there really is no true financials and there won't be any true financials until we get a firm in here that can give us access. Because I do not wanna report out any, any false financials. Uh, I'm sure Piper's got some statistics that you can.
Yeah, I gave.
As far as true financials. There's no sense in reporting out financials when they're not correct. So until we get a firm in here that can give us true financials, we're not gonna have any financials.
Okay.
You want, do you have anything?
I just, I handed out the statistics and then the overtime report.
Okay, perfect. Okay, you man, finance committee?
Well, the, in the essence of time, uh, the finance report is on your share plan. For rounds minutes. I'll just do a quick synopsis of that. I'm looking for this finance report. I'm not messing around.
Whatever.
Gotcha.
Okay. Uh, most utilization was down except for observation, observation discharges. All the clinics. With the hospital admits flat, are flat. And accounts reconciled, uh, for June. Kelly Klein CPA from Casey Peterson was given the financial department. Our list of needed, um, items to reconcile the next remaining months, if we go that way. Cash position and, uh, Randy told us that we're in good, good, uh, position for cash. No money has been withdrawn from the money market again this month. The bank did increase our interest rates to five percent. I think it was four point five one time. What was this in?
It was four.
Four, was it four? Okay.
Which accounts in?
The C.
That would be the money mark.
Yeah.
Or, or that's the CD. I'm sorry. It's the CD.
And then there was another hundred thousand put back into the money market as well.
I was gonna add that because I didn't know how much it was.
Right.
Um, I, I still think it'd be nice to be seeing those, um, bank accounts and, and the money in them.
That was. Um, and Jennifer. No, we never.
You requested it, Jennifer. She said she would do it.
So next time we should be able to get something. She did print off a, um, quick synopsis of. This income statement, December twenty-three, gives the revenue and expenses. And then the December twenty-three net income. Um, which was seven, seven eighty-five, three oh six to the goods. So I don't know if that's some actual put in there or anything. Is that?
Uh, no, I wanted that taken back out because it's not true.
I didn't think it was.
If it was, we'd be pretty.
I'm getting outside here.
No, if it was, we'd be beautiful.
Okay. Well, she said she talked.
See, and, and I, I, I totally would pull it out.
Okay, very good. I'm glad to make contact. The overtime, um, I presented the report for six months today. OT continues to rise, slight utilization being down for December. Uh, it was requested of managers, the who and why. OT continues to be up. Randy agrees management will give us some more information regarding the down benefit of the eighties and OT. We understand that there are sickness, seasonal sickness, uh, you know, open positions and some need for travelers. Acute and manner, uh, still need an RN, and there are five traveling CNAs at the manner. Sandy's report for Epic AR, uh, she gave that out, AR days. Uh, for hospital and professional billing were seventy, seventy, sixty-seven point eight, which was a decrease from last month at a tenth of a day. Uh, our primary denial rate was down to eight point five. The acceptable medium was seven point six.
When you say denial rate, you're referring to?
Okay, those kinds of things.
No.
AR, AR balances or self-pay accounts increased seventy-six point two two two. Medicare, Medicaid, Marshall, uh, workers' comp and those others. I don't, I can't remember what that meant. Sorry.
Which one?
This one. Self-pay accounts were increased. We're just, we're just continually seeing self-pay accounts go up. And, um. Some patients are utilizing the plan of medify and some of the others, but some don't qualify. And the marketing of options are gonna be made available to consumers. Um, in the near future, we're gonna advertise that more, what, what programs we have, care credit. Medify, those kinds of things, compensated care. Um, forty-two percent, uh, represents self-pay, thirty-three percent are Medicare. And that's our AR special billing. Note was made, note that Medicaid has dropped some of our doctors from the system. Um, so we had to add them back in and then of course we will rebuild. Uh, Atno Medicare Advantage Plan was noted, um, as being the most difficult to collect from and causing billing issues such as denials and reorganizations. Other projects discussed were HVAC and hospital O two. We did receive a grant for the O two of three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two, seven thirteen. And, uh, we have till two thousand twenty-six to utilize it or spend it. Architects requesting more funding to continue investigating HX. I think you're probably gonna do all this, aren't you? Okay, I'll, I'll shut up. Randy, uh, states, okay, we have X-ray stuff, we'll forget that. Um, audit updates. We just talked about that. Say Gintac goes live two one instead of one two. Um, Jennifer did say that the system was more efficient and faster to use. And then Dr. Reimer was still concerned about the Medicare Advantage Plans and, um. The open enrollment for Medicare Advantage Plans for people wanting to opt out, uh, closes on March thirty-first, twenty-four. Um, the committee discussed how we could get that information to the community. As well as continuing education on Medicare in general and how to navigate the plans. With, um, Kelly Reed, Kelly Page and Seth Parsons. That was it.
So Sandy, just for clarification, the denial rate, isn't that claims?
I'm sorry.
The denial rate is claims.
Yeah, it's the claims. It's, um, you know, when they. Sometimes at that medical necessity we don't make, and so they're, they're denying those claims. It'd be, um, they're denying it too because it. Insurances change for that, that patient.
Right.
Uh, you know, some coding or different codes, you know, deny.
Well, I know Epic gives these little kudos, right?
Yeah.
Little awards.
Those are based on Epic, um, for Epic people that are similar to us. So some of those are based on like very different organizations.
Okay, so the overall denial rate is, is, is low, it's eight point five and the medium was eleven point six. We got a, a kudos for a primary denial rate, which was eight, the medium is eleven, and clean peg claims. Uh, we got a, a kudo for that, which is sixty-nine point four and the medium is six. So those three areas, I think we're doing very well in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leanne. All right, Kim?
Um, I'm gonna be quick because we have no credentialing and my stuff didn't need to be dismissed, so that's quality. Um, in that yesterday, we've been over our, um, monthly incidences. They're still down, which is good. Um, satisfaction surveys, we went over the V trail. I have a little report that I put, um, together. I just kind of went over our monthly, um, how we're looking monthly and then how the questions were returned, those scores too. Um, all fairly good, um, for the couple of months of information that we've got. So hopefully. Um, as we get more information, it'll be even better. Um, it's easier to track how many surveys were sent and how many were returned through V travel. I like that capability with that, um.
Are the rates similar to what we have or any better?
Um, it's a little hard to tell right now, but I would say it's probably about the same. Um, I'm hoping it'll get better. I'm gonna work with the clinic, um, to get their survey return rates up. Um, see how we can work together to get those return rates up. I can't be over there all the time to remind people. Fill out your survey, fill out your survey. So working with the clinic staff to just remind people, you're gonna be getting a survey. Um, it's pretty quick, short little survey, just make sure you fill it out, so. Um, we uncovered the temp staff. We have five CNAs in long-term care. Uh, potentially maybe one coming for acute care. Just kinda excited to see how things pan out over there. Um, the manner, we are gonna start working on the five-star quality rating and get that back up to a five-star. Um, so in order to do that, we've got to monitor manner residents that sent to the ER. Um, every time a manner resident is sent to the ER and they're not admitted, um, or transferred, they're just sent back to the manner that hurts our quality score. Um, so we're gonna be trying to work with providers, do a little bit more outpatient testing, you know. On a nurse cause or something wrong, ordering outpatient labs, ordering outpatient radiology or something like that. Um, instead of just sending them to the ER, um, doing a little bit more on their end. Um, and then monitoring residents taking, um, anticoagulants, just making sure, you know, if they're on comit and that their INRs are being taken in a timely manner. And that they're getting done routinely. Um, right now, we don't have to worry about it. We don't have anybody over there on it, but, um, we'll be having an influx of resident. Um, admitting some new residents. One of them could potentially be on a comit end, so just making sure we've got something in place to monitor for that. Um, and then opioid stewardship, um, me and Melissa are gonna work together. We already do a quarterly, um, narcotic audit. Um, we're just gonna add a little bit more robustness to it, um, double checking PRN usage. Um, are they using it? If they're not using it, discontinuing it. Uh, if they're using it a lot, maybe they need a dose increase. Or maybe they just need to be scheduled, um, things like that that we'll, um, be looking at, so. Um, infection control over in acute care, seeing some COVID positive patients, um. Had a couple admitted to the hospital, so I'm doing outpatient care. Um, so it's still definitely out there. Um, EDW times they were just up a little bit, um, from last month and we're still seeing the. Accepting provider wants to do a little bit more testing on the patients before they get shipped over to them, so. Um, and then I've been looking into the Malcolm, Malcolm Valdridge Quality Award. Um, so that's gonna be our, um.
Oh.
Our goal, um, is to try to achieve that. So, um, just trying to do some research. They've got seven, um. Colors that they use, trying to see, you know, how we can integrate it into our hospital and then get that award, so. It'll be a project.
Who, who presents this award?
Um, the Malcolm Valdridge.
Yeah, it used to be industry, you used to get it, but now they switched a few years ago where healthcare, they opened it up to healthcare. So there's been a couple, uh, in healthcare received Malcolm Valdridge. Award and that's a, that's a huge award. And I think with the quality of care that we have here, not only in long-term care, but acute care, I think we can get that. I really do.
In my, uh, I'm doing some quality certification stuff. They had that listed as, you know, an award and some other awards that I'd never heard of. So I was gonna look into those as well and see, you know, what we can. Try to do for our hospital on the national level, get some recognition here, so. Um, home health, just working on their survey. Um, what was found on survey, just making sure that they're compliant, monitoring that. So she's doing all that good stuff.
Did you have another survey?
No, just continuing to monitor her. Yeah. Um, and then clinics, we talked about survey return rates. Um, pharmacy, Joy hired a new pharmacist. So, um, I've been kind of sit down, starting to sit down with the managers with Action Q. Looking at their performance measures, um, making sure it's something that they still wanna document on and track. Um, if it's not, let's get rid of it. It's just added work for you and let's get something on there that's more meaningful for them to track. Um, so Joy's gonna sit down with the new pharmacist when she comes on and look at their performance measures and see what they're tracking. And if they wanna continue, what they wanna add on to that. Um, and then kind of the same thing with Jana. Um, she, I gave her the list of the HR performance measures. She's taking a look and see what would be best for HR to track. Um, and then AR, we talked about that, that it was down point one days. That's about it for me. That's all we got.
Nice. Um, Jamie?
And maybe you said that, but Melissa interviewed the NLPM.
Oh, I did not.
Acute care, Danelle, that interviewed an RN, right?
Yes.
So that would be.
To come on as ours, as a traveler.
As a traveler, but actually, just in the last day, um, we had a RN that's moving here. And we're gonna talk to her tomorrow and potentially not have a traveler.
Okay. But the LPM is permanent. I mean.
Work time. And then we'll hopefully work into full-time, so.
And incidents continue to go down, so wonderful.
And you have thirty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight.
Oh, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine senses.
Thirty-nine, yeah, we had gentlemen come yesterday, yes.
Okay, moving on to old business, radiology update. Randy?
Tisha.
Yeah. Um, so I know you guys are aware, I hope you're aware of the X-ray project that's on our capital budget. Um, over the last couple of months, I've been talking to three different vendors. We've had a lot of meetings between Randy, Piper and I. Um, I have three different quotes from Philips, Siemens and GE. They're all very comparable. Um, rooms, essentially. Piper has those pulled up right there. The biggest thing that I would like to do is I would like to add stitching. So that's a service that we can offer for patients who have scoliosis. As well as leg length. And it's basically where we can take, we take an X-ray, starting up here at the cervical spine and you work your way down and it stitches it all together. So it's very big for especially pediatric patients. Um, that's something that I would like to add that a lot of these rooms do have now and all of these three do have. A big thing that I've been keeping in mind as well is our bariatric patient size. Um, all three of these rooms will come with an eighty kilowatt generator, which reduces patient dose. Um, and also gives us a little bit more oomph to get through those larger patients.
Does stitching cost? Does it cost extra?
It's wrapped into it. So it's basically something that all of them are coming with now. Um.
Oh, standard.
Yes. Yeah. So all three of these room, well, the GE and the Philips, those are more of the mid-grade or X-ray room. Um, what was comparable to the Philips and the GE is the Siemens Iseosprey and that is their higher end. Um, personally, I'm really impressed with the Philips. Philips is offering a ten-year service agreement plan, which I love. They also extended their warranty by six months for us. Um, and then all of these, so for Philips, our field engineer will be based out of Rapid City. I did go look at that exact same machine in Hot Springs. Um, Dakota Radiology, as well as money facilities are starting to install that one. Um, and then I did go look at a GE in Sturgis, equally as oppressed. Um, you know, talking to the techs, it's kind of apples to apples, honestly. Um, they all would have two detectors, so one would be fixed in the wall bucky. And then the other one would be a free loading detector. So we use that for the tabletop, um, as well as concept work. So pros and cons to each, but personally I'm leaning towards the Philips. Um, just what they've offered, how receptive they have to the table limit on that is four hundred and sixty pounds. With all the movements in the table, um, we could go up to an eight hundred pound patient, however. The hard thing with that is we couldn't raise the table at all and we also couldn't move. So you're really limited as techs and that kind of opens us up to injury. They call that the static limit. Um, however, you know, push come to shove, if we had to, we could maybe finagle something. But I kinda go off of the actual free moving, what we could do with all movements of that table. So, um, the next step that we would take, if this is something we pursue, is to bring them in and have them actually look at our room and measure our room. Um, to ensure that it is something that can go in that room. I did send our CAD drawings to Philips and they said it would be no problem. Um, because that is something that they requested off the bat when working up this board. So. Our current room is just really out of date. Um, unfortunately with radiology equipment, it does become end of life and end of service. So, right now, um, I did break down the service agreements and what we'd be looking at paying either per month or quarterly. Um, they are all comparable to what we are paying now for our GE. So, and this does include all the. Um, they are all comparable to what we are paying now for our GE, so, and this does include all the trade-in values as well, so. These quotes include them taking apart our current room and disposing of it, including the portable that's staying downstairs. So that alone is a very big job if we were to outsource that, um, of course, there's gonna be construction. You know, and that's not wrapped up into this cost that you guys see, um, probably flooring and. You know, we have to make sure that our ceilings can hold the weight. You know, we have to make sure that our ceilings can hold the weight. I'm not looking at doing any fluoros, so that cuts down costs. Because we don't have any, we don't have a radiologist, so. But looking at, you know, if, like the smart virtual ortho, the orthopedic, the scoliosis studies, depending on what we do at the clinic. Definitely looking to not pigeonhole us, but allow room for growth, um. So that's my goal with that. They all do have a three D camera on them. They call it three, it's not really three D. Um, with that, it's actually drastically reduced repeat rates for us as techs. Um, it kinda, what it does is your patient is, you know, visible on your X-ray tube itself. Um, so there's a camera that has eyes on the patient at all times, and then when we walk around to our viewing station and our monitors. Um, we can still see that patient in lifetime, so we can tell if the patient's moved out of the light, um, and out of our calibration field essentially. The other thing I do like about Philips is it has a two K monitor, which is the radiologist's reading, um, quality. So at night, our providers don't get radiologist reads on X-rays. My idea and my thought behind that is having something like that would be nice for our providers, cuz then they can come around to our reading station. Look at the X-rays on radiologist's quality monitor as opposed to computer monitors, so.
And they have the lowest bid.
They do. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, um, I have not looked at the Siemens yet, um. They offered to fly me out there to look at it, but in seeing. I added to the Siemens everything that the Philips and the GE have, and that's the price that came in, which was pretty high. Um, again, I'm really impressed with the Philips. I've been really impressed with all the questions that I've wanted to answer. They've been really on top of it. Um, and I did like that they are gonna give us some trade-in for what we have currently, um, I think that's pretty big as well.
Their surface seemed to be a little bit higher, though.
Yeah, the Philips.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does have, the only, the biggest difference with that is the, um, drop protection for that sky plate. Um, that does have a higher deductible, if you will. So, but again, we don't have any drop incidents in our current detector and we only have one detector in that room. Um, I did go through and kinda X-nay some stuff that comes with those packages that we don't need, that we didn't, you know. They do come with this, you can hold a remote and it'll sit there and move, move around the room for you. We don't need that, we're not busy, that's really nice in the super busy hospitals, so I was able to cut costs that way, so, um. But I like that they will give us a ten-year service agreement plan, that's huge, and I was able to get the, um, service location from Denver to Rapid City. So.
You're a good shopper.
You are.
Good shopping with me.
I make a motion, we, um, go with the Philips C ninety.
That we're looking forward to that.
I mean.
Are you done with your bids?
It was a capital.
Yep, it is on the capital, um, budget. It is something that we do need, um. I would like to, you know, move forward with it if it's something that we decide. It definitely is gonna be a very big logistics thing. Um, in terms of, you know, for example, Hot Springs, they were without an X-ray room for two months. It is going to be the next step, we'll be bringing them in, seeing what we can do with this room. Um, what will be needed construction-wise, so I'll have to bring, you know, Ron into it. Piper's been here before, so I'll be relying on her a lot.
Do you think we might be down, so?
Well, I kinda have a plan, that in terms of, we're gonna have to get creative as techs to be able to, we do have our portable X-ray machine. Um, image quality is gonna be a thing that we're gonna have to talk about, especially with our larger patients. Um, I'd also like to, you know, maybe talk about the possibility, if we can find a way to utilize the clinic X-ray machines. And figure out something with billing, um, so there's definitely some logistics and stuff like that to work through. Um, but ideally, I would like to go with the Philips. They do, um, also have, we would have a. Sky plate protection cover. We've been getting a lot more busy with these orthopedic patients, so that's something too that is a big. Plus is it has a five hundred pound weight limit, so we're doing standing feet, um, all those orthopedic type exams as well, so. But again, all of them kinda have the same. Across the board, things that come with it, it's just a matter of what we wanna go with. I did look, image quality's fantastic. It does give me confidence that Hot Springs, who uses our radiologists, is using the C ninety. And they've loved it and have had no complaints, so.
So Connie made the motion, do I have a second?
Did Randy have?
Well, are we going, I mean, this is just to, after you talked with Ron and Piper and all that. That's why I didn't say an amount.
Yeah, and the price is complete, I mean, it's tremendously lower since we went with the GPO too.
So I'll have that extra money to do the renovation.
Connie, you moved to accept Philips.
I did.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Host. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns for me, or?
Good job.
Thank you, thank you. Well, if for some reason the renovations come back big, which they probably won't, but we'll just revisit it again, but.
Yeah, absolutely, I can, they said that they could get out here pretty quickly, um, so what I can do is I can have them get out here and kinda see what we're looking at. And then we would be responsible for a project manager. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that'll be the next step, so I can certainly start working on the next steps with Philips to see and then report back to you guys for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keisha.
Okay, HVAC update, Randy?
Yes, my pleasure. So an HVAC update, I did like a reported out. Uh, in the finance committee, uh, I did go on a tour with Ron again of the, uh, long-term care. HVAC, uh, above the ceiling, uh, and then we walked throughout the facilities. So just found a lot of different things that really need to be taken care of that wasn't really noted in the proposal, uh, from Cushing. I talked to Mike Allen about it. He was in a, he was not aware of the problems that I had found, so I said, okay, this is gonna go out for rebid. We're not only gonna use you, but I will call a couple other architects. He said, well, if we're gonna pursue this further, um. I'm gonna have to, you know, charge you more. I said, no, you've already charged us a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars we paid you. No, you haven't paid us that much, and. Um, I think Jeannie overheard, I mean Denise overheard me, um. I said, no, uh, we have paid you a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, cuz I. What I got on the general ledger here, that we have paid you doesn't lie, and I've reviewed it several times, and this is what we have paid you, and we're not paying you anymore. Uh, and he continued to argue, again. I said, I'll just let you know, uh, as soon as I receive it as some information on the board of. Really what route we wanna be cut, wanna go, because I think. Given what I have found from an engineering standpoint and walking with Ron and talking with Ron above the ceiling and how that was. Uh, built over and over again since nineteen forty-nine, it is not a very pretty size. And then walking throughout the facility below with the way the flooring is, and I, I'm, everybody has been over there, I mean. How waves and then some of the flooring is higher than the others, so it poses a trippage, so if we're gonna really look at this. We need to get a true feeling, although it's really gonna cost not only from HVAC standpoint. From a life safety perspective as well, so that's why I said we're gonna, it's gonna go out for bid again, and Mike didn't like that, so. But, you know, I've gotta look at what's best for the organization, what's best for our patient and what's best for, uh, from a life safety perspective. So, that's why it's gonna go out for rebid.
And that's the whole project?
Yes, yep. I mean, I don't think that's the only way to go. You know, and I was surprised that he didn't see the things I see. I mean, I don't have that good of eyesight and I didn't even have a glasses. So it's like. It had overlooked what I seen and what Ron was telling me, but I don't think. I don't think they got really Ron that involved back then when they was proposing all of this.
So can we use anything from what was originally?
Yeah, we can, yeah, the documents and stuff, yeah, we'll go, they'll just have to update them and stuff, yeah.
Cuz otherwise, we're gonna have to pay again, so I'm wondering.
But I, I've never seen, I've never seen prices so high, like a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars for. Just a few documents that we received was.
Well, isn't it inaccurate as well?
Yeah, they weren't accurate from what I read, I mean, if I was walking through. I would have seen from an engineering standpoint. What was wrong and those were not even mentioned in there, and Mike agreed, no, I didn't see that, I said, well. I did, and it didn't take me very long, you know. It is what it is, but I gotta look at what's best for the organization, but also for our patients and from life safety perspective. Uh, infection control standpoint, and what's best for our organization.
So, uh, wasn't that last month we were talking about, um. They were gonna do some stopgap with the HVAC.
I think that was with the hospital side.
That was on the heat exchanger.
Well, yeah, you did that, but then you were also talking about the.
Minus splits are the four-ton units?
Yeah.
Yes, I talked to Mike about the four-ton units, now Ron and I did agree that. We could go ahead and move forward with the four-ton units, we just need to get additional pricing updates, because that would push. That, that wouldn't affect this part of the HVAC, this, the two four-ton units with the piping. The way Ron and I looked at from an engineering standpoint, because Mike, Mike asking wanted to put. These two units on the rooftop, which would create additional problems from a leak perspective, a hazard perspective. So if we would sit them on the ground outside with a concrete pad would be, from what I see from an engineering standpoint, and even from. Ron was saying, would be more cost-effective. Less stress on the roof structure, less leaks, so that's what we're gonna bid out to, uh, actually, Ron is in contact, in contact with some of his. Contractors that have done work for him before on these two four-ton units, because this would pipe additional cooling into where we need it. And that would be separate.
Still to go with individual combs and on each patient room?
Well, we're looking at that, but Mike is pushing. New fan core units in each patient room, but if you put them in each patient room, which I agree with Ron, if we go that route. There's not gonna be much room left in each of those patient rooms when they. Put the fan core units in there, because the fan core units take up anywhere from three to six feet. So whether you can get just one bed in there in the future or two beds, it's gonna depend, uh. And I brought that up to Mike, but he said that was the best case scenario. I said, no, if you really look at. Many splits above the window, that still gets a space in it, well, he went over to that idea, though.
Carrie, so you have a question?
Yeah, I.
I was just saying, she's, the, so the wall, the units that go in the, the rooms, they are, they are gonna be cumbersome because they're. All residents will butt their chairs up to that window there, and that's how the TVs are set up, so we were trying to figure that out when. When I heard that, I was like, okay, so if you put the unit here and then you put the chair out here and then those rooms become even smaller, then it becomes a hazard. Cuz you have all of that equipment out in the middle of the room, so.
Right.
If you can mount it up somewhere else, that'd be.
Yeah, see, in the past, I've mounted, I've, I've had the contractors mount above the window. Uh, which worked really good, and you got the same air exchanges per hour. Uh, and it worked out really good, and they were individual. I mean, they didn't cost that much, I mean, they were heating and. So, that's what we really need to look at, just put it out there for bid, I mean, if we're gonna be realistic.
So, and I have another question, which doesn't, art, which sort of pertains, but, so how did? How did the heating hold up over the manor this last week?
Oh, over the manor, I think the manor was better than.
We had one sprinkler that was leaking.
Right.
And then there was one pipe that had froze over. Um. Unit six, I think it was over there, but, um, he was able to get it warmed up and it didn't end.
And we had one in right close to radiology there.
On the outside of the building, it broke, it was. Uh, on the outside of the sleep room, and Keisha heard it in radiology when it broke.
Right. So really not a whole.
It was good, yeah.
Yeah.
It was good.
Well, Ron's figuring that out so we can get it turned into the insurance company, yeah.
But overall.
Really good.
It was good.
Residents stay warm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised at the little damage that did take place, I mean, it really was.
Just an aside, because you reminded me of something, is that also when we had the leak in the basement. Not only did maintenance work cleaning up, but so did Keisha and Wendy.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it was very good.
Mine look like a wet dog, but it's your pick.
But thank you.
Yeah, even the bed back there was clean, I was, I was impressed.
So. My question is, we've been holding back on. We've got a, a crummy census, eh, in the manor for way over a year, and the excuse that. Has been staffing, and that we need to leave these rooms open because of the potential. To have to move patients around for this HVAC thing. So if we were scrapping this whole HVAC project and going with another HVAC project. Are we gonna have another year of crummy census because we're gonna be holding beds for potentially. Another HVAC project? I, when are we gonna get the census of the manor up, I guess, if I?
I guess maybe when we get more staffing, and I don't mean to say that rudely, but.
No, I, I, that's fair.
Our openings are out there, and this LPN happened to come across because her husband happens to work in EVS, and she worked in the manor before. Um, I can hire more travelers, I, I, I have them sending them to me all day long, I mean, I'm filtering through all these folks. And all I have to do is just make one call and I've got another traveler here, but that's not them being invested into the system, so if I can get ten more travelers here. And I can bump the census back up to fifty-eight. Once those travelers are done, say they wanna go to California, cuz now it's summertime, I got no one to take care of the staff, or to the, the patients, so.
It's not the HVAC, that's the problem.
Well, that's part of it too, it is part, but I would say the bigger part of it would be the staffing part of it, so.
Do you want to do the CNA class?
We're doing the CNA class, and so come summertime, we're gonna be looking pretty good. A lot of our gals are the high school gals. Who were NSAs, and so they moved up, and so.
Yeah, they can only work so.
Yeah, so they come after school, which really helps us in the evening, but I think in the summertime, if we don't have a lot of, we might have a couple seniors that will probably work, maybe save up some money for college. And then they go away, like we had one gal move to Casper, I think she's on to Casper. So we can only maintain them for so much, I mean, we're gonna put out, we're gonna do a job fair in February, um, is that in Sheridan? Sappan City, um, and so it just, it just depends, we can hold CNA classes, but we have to have the time.
If we're gonna ignore the HVAC thing and not be holding beds open for an HVAC project that may or may not happen. What, based on what you have for census, but I mean, what you have for staffing, what do you think you can increase the census to?
Well, we just lost six, we lost six patients in December, that was pretty.
I know.
Pretty traumatic for everyone over there, um, so we've bumped back up three more. And we are looking in the community, we can probably get back up to forty-four again, which is where we were, right before we lost some folks. Hmm, I think it was forty-four, somewhere in there, yeah, um, but it has been as high as forty-six at one time. There's three waiting over in the swing bed over here, I've been calling on the waitlist, some people have passed away. What I look at on the waitlist is if they're already in a facility somewhere and safe, I have to look at the next person on the list. Who's in the, you know, community that might need to come in, and they may be a little higher up in the list, but if they have a higher need, then we, we bring them in, just like the gentleman we brought in yesterday. So, um, and a lot of people who are on the list, you call them and they're like, well, I'm not ready yet, just keep my name on the list and I just wanna hang out there and. That's fine, and I get calls every day. One day I got three calls from VAs from like Cheyenne, Sheridan. Um, I forget the other one, but they're always looking to place their. Patients, and some of them are extremely behavioral, so we just don't have the needs for that also, um. So it's. It's hard, it's hard, um, it would be different if our unit was structured a little bit different, um, but. Uh, anybody that's severely behavioral over there with the, with the population we have over there would be a little bit rough for them. So I have to look at, you know, staff safety, we still have a lot of staff who are, um, unfortunately encountering some behaviors and. You know, it's rough for them over there, so we try to, we try to be. Accurate in where we place and how we place too, so we can take more patients in, we're, we're slowly doing it because admissions are rough, because we. Have to get that person to transition in to the community over there, and, um, so about one every couple of weeks is what I'm looking at doing. Cuz there are a couple more over and in all this space over there too, so.
How many people are in there that read lists?
Oh. At one time, there was thirty-five to forty. I say, I've taken a few off and then, um, I kinda just, I haven't really counted them up because I didn't really see that number, but. I've, I've just categorized and just called the ones who are not in a facility or if they, I called and they were in a facility, I just kinda, I left them in their same spot. I just make notes, you know, they're in. There's quite a few up in Mondale that are on our list that, um, are still, you know, kind of just waiting, but. Um, I would say probably right now about twenty-five to thirty. And I just added one to yesterday, so.
It's just because we get complaints from the community that we're a community hospital and we're not sort of community.
Well, and.
It's nice to have the information like you're providing us. We're worried.
Oh, yeah. There's, there's a couple of people on the list who, there's quite a few in the community out there who I've called recently and they're not ready yet. And, and whether it's not that they are personally ready to put their loved one in there or that their loved one is not ready, it's hard to say. So, um, we try to take within the community first. Um, because I do know I get calls from Rapid City. I just had somebody call yesterday and their, the person is in a facility there, but I'm like, well, they're, they're safe and. I had somebody call who said that their person's in a facility in Gillette and like, well, they don't wanna be there. Well, are they being mistreated or they just don't wanna be there? No, they just don't wanna be there. And this is a person who was in this community previously. So it's hard. It's hard to. It's hard to hear all these calls and not be able to take them in, but I am trying to take the ones with the most needs in first, which is helpful.
Well, so let's talk about this too. You have over five hundred hours of overtime, you know? And who does the overtime? Your staff, the staff on the other side or?
It, it's our staff. Um, it's picking up extra shifts. We actually have one traveler. This is totally her choice, but she works ten days in a row and she has four off. We have two RNs, six on, eight off, and they knew one six on, eight off. And so we only have. One day of the week, Wednesday, which we don't have an RN in. Um, we have several travelers who come in and I, I guarantee them they're thirty-six hours or forty-eight hours, but they will pick up extra. We have. And every, um, I could probably go get the papers. Every, um, month that we put out the schedule, so we have it out in advance. Right now, we're through February and come February first, we put out Marches. And so we always have the papers that we put up with the list of the open shifts available for staff to pick up. And we do get quite a few of them that pick up. I mean. We have a lot of, um, gals who, you know, like to get extra money. They've got kids, you know, there's birthdays coming up or whatever. But, um, we still have a lot of open shifts and we look at it too where we're not trying to overstaff. We're trying to just staff what we have there. And sometimes we can do without one, but, um, we definitely can't do without two or three, so.
The point is, is that if we have staff that we already employed that work overtime, that's great. Just don't wanna burn them out.
And that's another thing. They, they're getting burned out. They're getting tired. Um, and the problem is, is I'm not. Coming around and begging people to work. We put the availabilities up there and it looks good on paper. You write your name on all these little shifts and I have to tell them, when you pick it up, that's yours. But if you feel like you're getting burned out, come to me ahead of time. Don't call off for shift after shift because that makes occurrences. Yeah, and so we have a couple who just know that they can't pick up and I, I just know, I, I don't even, don't even ask, but.
Yeah, so, so the answer is, Jana, is, is your job fair?
Yes, I'm in Rapid City.
We have to get lots of balloons, I think. Yes, but because there's, it's a catch twenty-two between the staff doing overtime and the travelers that we pay.
Yeah.
So it's not easy.
But it's not just us.
Not easy.
This is a national.
It's not just in healthcare.
Right, exactly.
No, and it, it's just hard to find nursing personnel to cover.
Well, and even with the HVAC, um, system, and we can take on more patients. I was looking at some of the drawings that Ron had brought. And it looks like there's like seven phases they wanted to do it in and because there's so many different parts of the manor over there. So we would have to take all of our locked unit and put it over onto the other locked unit over there. So that's phase one.
Right.
And then phase two, you know, it's like half of this hallway and going through some of these rooms. Some of them that I would have to move other residents into, I really wouldn't want to because while they're in a larger double right now, they would. You know, I only have some smaller doubles available and then it's hard to squeeze all of their, and their stuff in there. So it's hard.
Yeah.
It's gonna be challenging.
It is, and I think the, the biggest problem during the summer is the cooling, which I, I know the two four ton units with additional piping. Will take care of most of that cooling. The other is the, uh, fan core units. And, you know, if one would go out or two would go out, we can bring in portable units from Siemens or whoever. Uh, until we can find a control or whatever, but, uh, I told Ron I would get him in contact with a. A vendor out of, uh, Seattle, Washington, that I've worked with in the past for controls for that. And, you know, if it's just temporary until we can get this thing solved, that's gonna be our best bet without being down.
Right, so is the plan then to, um, get in as many business possible quickly?
Yeah.
And then move on and reapply for the grants?
Yes, if we were, because we didn't get all the grant money, right, Piper?
Right.
Uh, we only got a certain portion. That's why we didn't move forward with it. And I told Mike that, but he just kept pushing and pushing that we do this and do this. I said, no. I'm not spending our money right now till we get the additional grant money, uh, because I'd rather, you know, have it for other sources. Be able to do this and do that. Uh, so. I think getting the new.
Grant then?
Excuse me?
We're gonna have to revise that grant.
Well, update, yeah, and, and get that, so we can get that additional money. Uh. But I think it's gonna be in our best and just go ahead and have that rebid from a couple of different architects and. Several different contractors. I just read in the paper, they, a contractor was putting in down, it was in the Gazette. Uh, building a mental health clinic and, well, so there's contractors out there. I mean.
I know.
I was like, okay, you only had one contractor? No, you can't be serious, you know? They're out there.
Right.
Anything else on the HVAC?
No, no.
Three forty B?
Yeah, on three forty B, um, we have one proposal in from Avanti and I think. Carrie talked to that gentleman and he said he talked to you about it. He is out of Wisconsin.
Uh, probably about a year ago.
Yeah, that's what it was. So, um, got another one coming from Wilco Data. Uh, they are out of Denver. So, I mean, with what we have, we're only looking at like seven, eight thousand dollar savings, but. If we can get our, um, clinics and everything provider base, then we're gonna be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year savings. So that's really what we wanna look at now. If Wilco Data comes in and say, you know, we're gonna save you ten thousand dollars, we'll go with them, but if they both come in, we'll just go with, you know. Probably Avanti because we've been working with them so long. So, uh, we'll know here next week or so on who we're gonna go with, but. It's gonna be our best interest to go ahead and go with somebody, so we can save that additional dollars. And then down the line, make all of our clinics provider base to get that hundred thousand dollar savings.
Questions? Okay, clinic update?
Yeah, clinic update, uh, and I talked about this, um. Last month, you know, it's gonna be in our best interest on all of our clinics to get them provider based. And in order to do that. You know, we're gonna need to move, there's no sense in spending the money that. The grant is saying to spend across the street. That's an old clinic. All we're doing is masking it. I mean, I helped two patients today get in their vehicle because their daughters wasn't big enough. To get their mama into their SUV. The poor lady had an oxygen tank on. She had her oxygen on. She tried to get her feet in the SUV. She almost tripped with the wheelchair. So I lifted her up myself. She wasn't that heavy. Put her in the SUV, took the wheelchair out, took it back inside because. God forbid, if she would have just left there in her own wheelchair, she would have been across the street and that would have been it. So it's a, it's a big hazard. So it's in our best interest to relocate the clinic over here. Uh, and that's what I. I think it's gonna be very much cheaper in the long run. So I wanna take that out for bid as well. Two architects to look at it and get new bids on that. Same thing with Upton Clinic. There's no sense in masking a shed. That is a little bit elaborate. I mean, that's all we got up there. I mean, Dottie and I went up there and everybody else. Probably has been, all it is is, it looks like a shed with, that's been updated with some medical equipment. Uh, so there's no sense in pouring that much money into it. And I was talking to Durbin and them, and I have also talked to Hersa. There is money available for FQHC. So if you, with the way Upton is growing. I think it's aren't gonna be in our best interest. And I even talked to Piper about it as well. To look at that within the next twelve, thirteen, four months. Make that an FQHC. That way we can run our current clinic, go ahead and build a FQHC, which will have. About seven different providers in there because that's what they require, but acute care, family practice, the psych, to dental. I mean, to every, every service that you can imagine. Uh, brand new facility, all new providers. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, it's gonna make a lot of money.
Do that on the, beside it?
Excuse me?
Do that on the property beside it?
Well, yeah, on the property. And then when that gets built, tear the old clinic down. And it's easier, it's easier to turn a rural health clinic into an FQHC than just a regular clinic into an, it's a lot quicker and a lot easier. So.
Is there more funding that way?
Yeah, there's a lot more funding. Yeah, especially on the FQHC side, because that's what we're.
Uh, we're gonna put provider based over here, but FQHC up there.
We'll have provider base here, FQHC, because FQHC is gonna be extremely higher reimbursed with it.
Questions? So how, when you get ready to do that, how do you, I mean, you guys probably know this, but how do you? How do you make sure that you actually will have the? People who come?
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information. On our award-winning website, newslj.com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
How do you make sure that you actually will have the? People who come? You look at your stats and like, can, do you have a way of doing that? Of, you know, kinda surveying Upton and saying?
Yeah, we, so we would do like, almost like we're gonna have to do anyway, a community needs assessment.
Yes, that's, that's the word.
So and then we would do a pro forma on what the return on the investment is to be. And we would do that on both, on, down here and up there, because your reimbursement on the provider base is gonna be a lot higher. But on the FQHC, it's gonna be extremely high.
But right now, we got a hundred and seven in December, Upton visits, patient visits. And we have one doctor going up there.
Well, no, well, yeah, if we had, if we had a full-time provider up there, which we don't.
No, I know.
And, but it, it would be busy all the time. And, you know, Mike is, is retiring and Lanny, I mean, he only works a couple of days a week down here and we don't have anybody up there. Uh, but I'll get that, I'll get in that just a little bit more of a talk, go down the line here. Yeah. Uh, so I think, you know, with the, the same ar- architects that's gonna look at the clinic here, could look at the FQHC up there. And, and tell what it's kinda gonna cost, uh, but also do a pro forma. And our return on investment and then do a community needs assessment up there as well. Those we're due for one here.
Second grant, not a one grant.
Excuse me?
That's another grant, not.
The FQHC, yeah, the FQHC will be a separate grant because you, you, you're more than likely to get that from Hersa.
Yeah, and Lanny was excited about that, wasn't he?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, influence policy.
Yeah, and Kim was gonna ki- kinda talk about the influence of policy a little bit.
No, I am.
No. Yeah, you, uh, Kim was gonna talk about the other one, yes.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Um, anyway, so most of you were here last month when a few of our employees came and talked about the influence policy for the employees. And asked us to look into it and see what we can do with it. So in the meantime, I've done a lot of research on. You know, the CDC, the CMS, the man, the regulatory, um, needs and whatever, um, talked to the quality committee. And there, they seem to be on board for a change of some sort. And I talked to Deb today at great length and she and I are gonna present it to the med staff next week. So to see, is it valid, is it valid to make changes to the policy? Do we keep it the same? But I just wanted it to be noted that we're working on it and that we heard them. And that, um, we should have an answer by the next meeting.
What is, I have one of those seasons.
Yeah, but it's. Yeah, and we, and if, if we can make changes to it, we'll make it as fast as we can. So.
We did have, I, I had another employee mentioned to me. You know, kinda similar concerns as they did last.
Well, Deb told me there's more than two. She said there's many more employees.
Yeah.
That are just kinda silent. So.
I mean, not that you're silent. We're looking into it.
I got it, I got it. Anyway, so any questions about that for now? Okay, um, heat exchanger, we.
Yeah, it looks like I talked to Ron day before yesterday. So it looks like it's about three weeks out from being installed and I'm still working with the insurance company on. Uh, trying to get them to tell us what they're gonna reimburse us from, uh, what we got coverage on that.
And what are you talking about?
Uh, the vaccine consent form.
Yeah.
Down in the new business.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, next is, um, thank you, Rennies. The mandatory training. We got an email from Eric Foley from Vio Hospital. Um, they are partnering with Lubnol. And have provided a two and a half hour public officer training that's certified by the state to meet the statutory requirements for us. Uh, to be in compliance. So they're, they're like, they're asking to set up the training in March. It says, when would it be a good time for you and your boards to have the training during the day? Do we need an evening? They also developed the virtual self-directed option for those that can't attend. And we're working on entering a funding agreement to help cover the costs. So they wanna know ASAP. So what I really wanna know is, um, Nick, oh, hi Alison. Um, do we have an option? Is March a solid time or do we have an option to change it to another month or?
I think March is when they were wanting to try and set it up. Um, but like, like you had explained in what you were reading, uh, they're gonna have an online, uh, self-study version. It'll just have a quiz that goes with it and we're still working on the technology side to get the quiz set up, so.
Okay, thanks, Alison. So would you guys like an evening? Like, when do you wanna set this up?
So Tricia, just, I, I've been to one, I went to one. Um, I did it with the, it's in current, but yeah, I mean, so I've got my little certificate or certificate, but, um. Yeah, it's nice that they've got it to two and a half hours. That's better than six.
So you don't have to do it this?
I, I wouldn't have to. I probably would.
Okay.
Um, just see.
Oh, there's a lot of information.
It has a hospital, so the one I went to was with the, um, it was an ag conservation, conservation district. And so. But. But anyway, that's, and I did learn some interesting things. I wanna mention that we get done with this, Billy, with this. Before we move on.
Okay, so Carrie, you did too? Okay, so Alison, with, um, Anne and Carrie. Already took the course, you know, I just need to know what we need from them to document.
Yeah, so, uh, for me personally, I, uh, got a waiver from the state, but some type of documentation. Uh, that you had attended the course. Hopefully they had provided you something. If not, maybe they could get an email. Just so there's a written documentation on file, uh, with the hospital.
Mine's in my year.
Okay.
And when, when was everything due? June?
It's not due and, yeah, until, I think it's before July first, but, um, it's a good idea to not wait to the last minute.
The only, the drawbacks is it's gonna be different numbers since the, after the election.
And then it'll be next year, I think. Right, right, Alison?
Yeah.
I think they have like thirty days to complete the training, which, uh, and I'm speaking off the cuff, I'm not positive, but. Um, that's part of why we got the self-study program put together is because. It's gonna be difficult to try and get new board members, everybody through training in some cases, so.
It's nice that you guys got it to two and a half hours. That's a lot better than the six.
Yeah, it's funny, um, we've been doing a lot of board trainings for years and so we've just added some of the financial elements. Uh, more specifics to meet their needs, but otherwise it tracks the board trainings we've done in the past.
So, so the question is, what's a good time?
I, I would rather do afternoon or.
I, I would rather do afternoon or I like to do evenings.
I'm good with that. Possible, not the week of the twenty-third, so.
Yeah, could it be early March?
Oh, I was gonna say, it can be late March.
I'll be in Florida, I don't care when you do it.
Twenty-third's a bad day.
I'll do, I'll do the, I'll do the, uh, virtual one.
It's the daddy dog.
Or I can zoom in, I can zoom in too.
Just get a date, a time.
Yeah.
Let us, well, get your count, it's really easy. Okay. Not this week preferably.
It's not gonna, I don't think Nick will be able to come in the afternoon either.
Can he do, can, now, can you do that over yourself? Didn't you just say there's? He attended something. Yeah, I've.
What I'm hearing is it might help to have one in the afternoon and one in the evening to kind of hit two different schedule sets. And so we'll probably hopefully gather that feedback from the boards, but.
All right, I'll see if I can get a sen- a decent census.
I'm, I'm still confused about the self-study then. Is that extra?
No, so that'd be like a video program that you could watch and then complete a quiz to prove that you went through the material.
If you can't attend the other session.
Okay.
So, so, so we have people to the one afternoon, how about you Connie?
It depends on the day.
Okay. So, what looks like a good? Day.
We go, we go to the fourth, we'll say, starting with the fourth.
How about that, is that Connie, is that you?
Four, six, and seven. Fourth, fifth, and fourth, sixth, and seventh.
I teach a class on Thursday nights, it's, uh.
Okay. Then the, then the sixth. The sixth is a Wednesday.
Okay.
You wanna go with that?
Preferably not.
No, is that the first week in March? It is.
Fourth.
The sixth.
Is the fourth Monday?
Um, the fourth, yeah, fourth is a Monday.
Works for me. Well, rather than, rather than wasting every time, why don't we come up with a consensus and let you know?
Fourth works for me.
All right. So we'll try, that's fine, that's perfect. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. So Anne, you can email me whatever you have, or email it to Alison. Okay? Your certificate.
Oh, my certificate, oh, I'll just, can I just bring it?
Sure, I think it would help if Denise could keep them, so you have them on file.
I do favorite Carrie's.
I do.
Okay.
I'll give you mine.
Okay, perfect, okay. Moving on to new business. New medical staff, I think Randy.
So, can I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Take five minutes, one of the things they talked about at that mandatory board training is that, in their opinion, that you should, uh, that you should, uh, the board should always be a part of the bank, one member of the board should always be a part of the bank reconciliations.
Really?
Really?
Yeah, I never heard that.
I have no reason, but anyway, I thought that was interesting.
Are you volunteering?
No. I just thought that was, I, cause I.
Isn't that what our financial committee does?
That's supposed to.
You don't do the reconciliation.
You don't, but, but, uh.
But they're, but they're involved in discussing.
That's what they said. They should, the board, there should be a one board member that sees the bank reconciliations.
Bank or all the reconciliations.
What, what training was it for?
It was for, that's what, it was for the conservation districts.
Yeah, which are a lot smaller organizations.
Right, yes.
Yeah. And, and so part of the reason this training was required by the legislature is there are so many small special districts, including conservation districts that weren't, uh, keeping good accounting practices. So they wanna make sure that every board member had appropriate training in case they didn't have the professional help they needed.
Which, and that's kind of why I would like to go ahead and participate in the, in this one, is because it is geared more toward hospitals. You know?
Right.
But.
All right, go ahead Randy. That was a nice snippet.
Right?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh yeah, a new medical staff, and I'm not gonna mention any names because they wanna keep it confidential until they come to the board meeting and medical staff meeting. Where do you have a family practice physician? His wife bought some land here a couple of years ago, so looking to move here in the next couple of months and wants to set up practice here about three days a week, so he'll be coming to the, very nice guy, really, really down to earth. Uh, so it'll become the next medical staff meeting, uh, in February, then, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll both come to, uh, the board meetings, introduce themselves, tell them what they can do for the community, uh, for the organization, for patients as well, so. One's family practice, the other's pain management.
Oh, okay.
So the pain management physician is gonna bring his boss as well. And live very far from here, so, uh, we welcome them with open arms, so.
What do you do ER? What if he available to do some ER?
No, he, he's not interested, he done ER in the past, uh, and he's done, he's done a lot of geriatric, he does, he has done some pediatrician. Uh, so he's, he's kind of, you know, uh, all around, but, uh, wants to set up a practice here about three days a week.
Okay. So would that be kind of with the clinic, in conjunction with the clinic?
Yeah, I think, I think we could probably put him here at the hospital, in the clinic, really. Uh, and set up, I was talking to a couple of members of the medical staff. Uh, we can set up injections one day, infusions one day, and pain management one day, and then we're looking at to bring sleep, uh, studies back to, and that will be a baby start for us, uh, compared to some of the other new service lines that I would like to see and some of the medical staff members would like to see as well, just be a baby step for us.
You're talking about the pain management guy, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And the general, general practitioner would join in at the clinic.
In the clinic, yeah.
Keisha?
If you're gonna do pain management, are, are these providers getting along with CPR? Or is it?
Well, I don't know, yeah, we'll find out more when they come to Matt, because that's one thing we'll have to look at too. They would almost have to have a CPR.
Cause everyone is raging.
Yeah. That'd be a good, uh, remedy. Really good remedy.
Said it?
Yeah, on that.
Okay, Kim, vaccine consent?
Um, so Randy had reached out to me and Deb to see if we had a vaccine consent form. Um, and I told them, I said, well, let me look back in my files from the clinic to see what I've got, and I found one, um, that I use for kids, but I tweaked it to kind of include adults, I uploaded it to your guys' SharePoint. Um, but I had Deb take a look at it and she liked the way it looked, so this is kind of what we've come up with for the consent form for you guys to take a look at.
Well, I, I think the question was, you know, I saw a consent form that we have a policy or some, something somewhere. And it says that all the information about the vaccines are provided, but it doesn't tell you what.
So, it's the V I S statement, the vaccine information statement, the patients get them before every vaccination. Um, so there's print-offs over at the clinic, that before you get your vaccines, you should get like a packet of your vaccine statements so that you can read them over. Um.
And is that, does that include all the up-to-date COVID stuff and?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Isn't that what you were concerned about?
Sure we have.
Now, that comes from the state.
Yeah, you can print those off the CDC, so that's where I would always print them off, um, was the CDC, because they do, some of them are old, they haven't been updated since forever, but there are some ones like the back, or the flu gets updated every year, I believe. Um, you know, the COVID's gonna be fairly new. Uh, when they do, when the state immunization comes and does the audit and the, um, survey, that's one thing that they always look at, is are your V I S statements up to date, and then the most recent, so.
Okay.
Yep, there's all of them over, over there, so.
Exactly, does a, does a doctor have to do to, um, inform the patient? I mean, do they have to inform about what's in the vaccine or?
So, I did some research, vaccines do not need to have like informed consent.
Okay.
Um.
They don't?
When you're saying that, you're not saying they're running around shooting people.
Right.
You know?
Right, right.
Well, there's.
Yada, 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 you could die for.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Nobody gets a phone without those. Even if you don't read them.
And the V I S statements, if you've ever read them, um, they're pretty informative, you know, they tell you signs and symptoms to look out for, um, what it is, what it does.
About per each vaccine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, like, as, as a genetic advisor.
It's all pretty general.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you, you made the comment about specific what's in.
Yeah. These forms are general.
So, if you were curious as to what exactly is in it, the nurse can pull the vaccine booklet out of the box and it's, you know, the big like roadmap book and thing, tells you exactly what's in there.
I think at the beginning, isn't that what we were doing? For patients is, if they have any questions, we just pull it out of the box and say, here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've had some questions in the past of, well, what kind of vaccine is it, and it's like, well, I mean, pull the
Yeah.
pamphlet out here and look at it and, um, it's got some good information too, because it's got, you know, your dosing, um, how much to give, side and, side effects on that too, so it's just a more in-depth that the V I S statement has, it's just, the V I S statement is like, this big compared to
Yeah.
This big, so.
Most general information.
Yeah.
Right, I don't think they're gonna get into, if you have this COVID vaccine, you might have a bullet clot in three months, you know what I mean, like, you know, that kind of information, I think that's what you're really looking for.
My apartment.
So, yeah, the booklet is gonna have your, like, clinical trials and the studies in there too, like, how many people had chest pain after this vaccine, so it breaks that down into that, um, information sheet there in the vaccine itself. Um, but it's.
I'm just wondering if we're, we're, I just wanna protect the community against possible litigation. Someone got the vaccine and they weren't properly informed or something, so I guess that's what I'm just trying to avoid.
Well, the state looks at that stuff when we give, I mean, when they survey us, yeah, like, we did, like, the state immunization program, they check that we're having patients sign that consent, so when, when the state audits us, they make sure that we're having the proper consent sign.
So, and it's only gonna be basic information anyway, like everybody else has. As long as we give it to them.
Yeah.
Right.
And the nice thing about Epic is, um, you know, this has this whole questionnaire on here.
Right.
Epic has this questionnaire built in, and so we were always told by the state, um, immunization unit that we don't even need to have like a paper consent, because the consent to treat includes that vaccine. Um, the only, and it gets a little sticky, is if sometimes, you know, parents will send their sixteen, seventeen-year-old child in for vaccines and it's like, I need your mom's. Yeah, it's, yeah, pediatrics is a little complicated, but, yeah, every vaccine, you know, in the Peds, they've got combination vaccines, you have to give that V I S statement for every single component of that vaccine, so. We're, we're good.
Yeah, somebody reads.
Any other questions? Can I keep you doing that? Um, potential Medicare seminars, do you wanna talk to that?
Yeah.
I had a touchdown already.
Yeah, we did touch a little bit on the Medicare seminar, we are gonna put a group together like, uh, uh, I guess when I first got here and did some speaking down at the senior sits and center thing, um, I think it's gonna be in our best interest, uh, from a political standpoint, to keep the public updated on the Medicare Advantage, um, and some other plans that, you know, people out there trying to, uh, win people over that are really not, not good, go ahead Karen.
What is your message about the Medicare Advantage?
Well, I mean, there's some false advertisement on, a lot of false advertising.
I just wanted to make sure that was your message.
Not that you can sign up.
And that's what we, and that's what we drove. So that's what we drove last, last time and it, it really helped people understand, because I had a lot of questions. And hopefully this will, will spark people to, that then make a lot of the townspeople come together and different groups come together and know we are watching out for them, uh, and Sandy's people are too, and even in the mentoring area, I mean, they're, they're really watching, uh, what type of insurance they're carrying and everything else, so, I mean, there's just a lot of false advertisement out there and even my mother back in Indiana said, Randy, I need, I said, Mom, if you, if you switch, I'm gonna come back home and slap you in the face like you slapped me. And said, no, you're not switched and stable to your whip, so, I think it's in our best interest to educate the public on how that is really is getting up.
And when people can change their priority plans and, yeah.
So Carrie, so, we, we get, we've gotten information back that some of the folks in the community are totally disillusioned with their Medicare Advantage plans and Lanny is like a huge proponent of don't sign up for Medicare Advantage plans and, and, you know, it's all over, it's, it's in Becker every day. Every single day, that, you know, there's denial rates, there's pre-sursts that they didn't expect, they, and so because we have this little window where they can switch, if they, if we can get to them, if they're interested, then that's kind of where we're focused.
I think we should split.
Split up, why?
I wanna meet new people, people who need me.
Meet new people, you're my love kidney.
You only need one of me, man, and you have two. There are plenty of people out there who are dying because they don't have one.
Really?
You'll be giving the gift of life.
I could be a hero.
Yeah, it's all win-win up here, buddy. Why don't you go and save a life, pal?
You're doing the right thing.
They can switch if they, if we can get to them, if they're interested,
Right.
then that's kind of where we're focused, because this year.
Wanted to make sure what that message was.
Well, just so you know, just so you.
Well, I've seen, I can tell you stories all day long of people.
I'm sure, I hear you did. You have freedom.
Still not receiving the care that they need because they can't get approvals from.
I know, it's terrible. And to go back from an advantage plan back to Medicare A and B, you can't. It's very difficult for the elderly though.
Yeah, yeah.
It is.
No, no, you can't go. You can, but it's very difficult to get them to, to do it. You know, they think that these Medicare Advantage plans are, are, because now they're not having patients prescribed, but now they have fifty-dollar coupons on their first bill that they make to a doctor.
Right, right.
And it's like, well, if you would have had just regular Medicare A and B, you wouldn't have a coupon.
Right.
And then, well, nobody told us that, we thought we were getting free meals and we were getting this and we were getting that, and, and we've tried, you know, I have in fourteen years of home healthers, trying to change people from an advantage plan back to Medicare and get rid of that A and B. It's almost impossible, because there's so many pre-existing conditions now
That is.
that they cannot get back on Medicare A and B.
Yep.
Well, you can always get back on Medicare A and B, you just can't get a supplement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can switch off Medicare A and, you can switch off an advantage plan to
Original Medicare.
Medicare anytime you want and, but you may not be able to get a supplement.
Right.
But, and they still cost you less, I can show you, I can show you a bazillion examples of them where people would pay, pay less if they had regular Medicare. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Then they would get their fifty-dollar coupon.
See, this year, this year, they hooked them with zero premiums, yeah. But they didn't look to see that their out-of-pocket was ten thousand dollars. I mean, it's just so sad. So that's where, that's where it's coming.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Now, that's, I don't blame you.
So you're extending that more, is that what I hear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kelly, Kelly reading Kelly, um, page, have already been involved in that, so that's who you're gonna use too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and besides, I think Lanny will be out on the street with a banner on. Uh, community needs assessment, Randy.
We didn't spoke about that till that, we had one. I've read another one that.
I don't have the last one done, about five years.
Yeah, I read the entire last one, I forgot.
Twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah. Two thousand twenty.
And I have that if anyone wants to.
I think it's, I think it's on, on SharePoint.
It might be. It might be.
It might be, yeah.
It's pretty interesting, we, we read through the whole thing and it's pretty good.
Okay, employee assistance program, Jenny, you're up.
So I. Sent around some flyers for you guys to look at. Um, I wanna look at implementing an employee assistance program for our staff. Um, and it's kind of a, a two segment, I, I guess there. I think nowadays, it's necess, it's necessary here in healthcare to have an employee assistance program. But I also think it's um, necessary to give them options. So I think it's kind of half and half, some people would rather, nobody know their problem, but they need to speak with somebody. They don't wanna know the person on the other end of the phone, but they need to, you know, vent or do whatever, so.
You're not talking, Brandon, you're talking.
Yes. Yep, personal, um. Like Melissa was saying, you know, when we lose six residents, it takes a toll on our staff. And, um, they need to, we need to provide them the tools and the resources. To take care of them, uh, themselves and their mental, their mental health, so. With our Blue Cross Blue Shield, the new plan that we have. Um, they do have a, an employee assistance program, it's called Work Partners. Um, it's pretty cheap, the second page shows you. Uh, we would.
Is this one?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So the second page shows you, um, we would be paying two dollars and thirty-one cents per employee per month. And what's nice about this plan is it extends to their families, so not just the employee, but their family members can use this as well.
Does it need a balance?
So there's that, and then I've also met with Jenny Peterson, um, who has. Um. Offered quite a few packages, I'm kind of leaning towards the middle one. I. Would like to see her come in and meet with our mentors, our mentors, once we get that back in a, up and running this year. So that, um, they can meet with them monthly. Um. Do different topics every month, provide leadership, training, um, and support. Um, we can also use her for our new managers. We, we see, um, you know, we often, this happens all the time that we see somebody that's really good at their job. They've worked here for a really long time, let's make them a manager. But we don't give them the tools and the resources to be successful at that, so. Um, she also does that kind of training.
So these are two separate.
Two separate programs. Um, my hope would be to incorporate both of them, um. Just because I think we need it, but I know one, Jenny is face-to-face, she can be here for. Our staff, for our managers, for additional training, um, and support. And then we've got another program through Blue Cross Blue Shield, so. I just wanted to set the seed and give you guys the information and maybe hopefully bring back Jenny next month. To maybe do a presentation of what she can offer. Um.
So there's two thirty-one on the Blue Cross Blue Shield one.
Mm-hmm.
Is that one hour?
Per, per, per employee per month.
Per employee per month.
Two hundred employees?
Yeah, we did. So we would pay that whether we use it or not, whether that employee uses it or not, so it's.
So it'd be a four hundred, four hundred-ish dollars a month.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Are we tied into it if we see that we don't use it? Like, is it a yearly contract?
I'm assuming it's a yearly contract, I haven't got that far into it yet, but I will ask them for sure.
But just to provide those kind of sessions for two dollars and thirty-one cents.
Mm-hmm.
In the seat, so do you have to have the Blue Cross Blue Shield through the hospital to be able to, do you have very high level insurance?
Nope, so this, our staffs that don't have ins, health insurance benefits, the rest can also use that. And like I said, it's nice that it extends to their family members.
And who provides this mental health?
Through Blue Cross?
Yeah.
It's their clinicians, um, it's through Blue Cross, but it's actually Work Partners and Work Partners would provide the clinicians to speak to people.
Okay, so it'd just be verbal online or?
Either verbal or Zoom or Teams or.
And be one-on-one. Probably not.
Not face-to-face, no.
But it could be face-to-face on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For me, this Jenny.
Mm-hmm.
Was that pause? Jenny Peterson. No.
Jenny can provide, you know, the support for our staff, but as well.
She is.
I'd like to use.
Jenny Colbrand.
Mm-hmm.
Jenny Colbrand Peterson. Jenny Colbrand Peterson.
She's the counselor.
Kristen Colbrand's sister.
Oh, okay. Jenna, can you send me a Jenny paper down in this week?
Yeah. Here.
Oh, thank you, I got one.
So.
I would use her for. For the, the training, the mentorship, the management training, leadership training. I would use her more for that, but she is available for staff one-on-one if they need it. She's just a little bit more expensive face-to-face.
I think, I agree with you, I think it'd be very helpful if she could come and. And say what she's actually.
Right, yeah.
You know, papers.
She's very willing to do that, I just wanted to finish the seed and let you guys know what she was thinking about. So maybe you could be prepared with more questions next time.
But you want us to, to consider the Blue Cross plan? And then meet Jenny?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then, so are we favoring this or we need a vote? You'll come back once you.
Yep, I don't need a vote tonight, I just wanted to give you information to.
Okay, and she's gonna come in and do the presentation.
Yeah, but it's two different votes.
Right.
Yeah. Hey, awesome, thank you. Any questions for Jenna? Okay, moving along, governance committee report.
For how to work on. Could work on sort of things. But we wanted to know. Wanted to do, if you guys wanted this to do.
Well, we're, we're still working on orientation stuff. I've got a checklist, this from Mary Martin to kind of revamp and then bring it in to see what you guys think. And, um, implement a, um. Yeah, checklist, this is it, for board effectiveness, this is the, this is for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what we were kind of using as a template.
For, for each board member to, to evaluate themselves.
Typically, I guess boards are supposed to annually.
Mm-hmm.
Um, assess. Themselves as to what they understand and, and. What areas maybe they need help in, so that would give us a, a way of knowing. What areas that maybe like they didn't, um, didn't understand the authority of my board. That type of thing, or understand the role of the staff with whom my board works. Let's see. Statutory definition of my board on record, we decided that was bylaws. Um, it's just little, it's just little. Things that we kind of need to know if there's more. Do you feel competent in what you're doing on the board? Or if you feel like you need certain ex, more experience or more training in that area.
Well, that's just something, yeah, that's, that was one thing we worked on, and then we talked about a CEO checklist.
Yeah.
Eva.
Evaluation.
Six months, six months, every six months.
And so, is that kind of a board evaluation or is it?
That's a self-evaluation.
Individual board self-evaluation. And come on, get your opinion up before we go about all the work. But it's kind of recommended. Mary Martin. Is who we got it from, so. What do you think? University Extension Educator. She's the one that gave it.
Would this be annually, is that what you're?
I'm thinking annual. And I guess I.
I'll be honest, this feels like busy work. Yeah, I don't mind if we discuss it and. And as a group, as a group say, yeah, maybe we need more help in this. I, I think that would be more helpful than as an individual.
But your experience.
My two cents.
Well, my experience and I'll supply enlighten everybody on my experience in the last forty years I've been in administration. Board members have always done a self-evaluation each individually, which then they come together as a group and say, okay. I need this, I need this, I need this, I need this, or. You need this, you need this, you need this, and then. Whether you do it at a retreat, like a board retreat every two years, so you, you have the education there, you have somebody from the hospital association. Then you have maybe somebody else from a different league to come in and speak, and then everything that you have listed on there is, is complete, so.
Yeah. So.
Molar over.
It's just a good tool.
Yeah. It's not something we have to decide tonight, it's something we were just gonna, just an idea.
We just didn't want to put a bunch of work into it and think that you don't want to do it.
Right, that's why. Well, we'll talk about it again next month.
And you might do some research on it.
But, um, we're also working on the orientation folder, which is lots of out-of-date stuff. So, I updated some of the stuff. Once, once we get the bulk of the things done, then I'll just send you guys an email, say, look at this, 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 and this. Tell me what you think the next meeting, because to print it and bring it in, you guys will tear your hair out, so.
Plus, you know, we were looking for bylaws, we were like two or three copies of bylaws in there. And so we, we kind of went through that.
I found them, you can see them immediately now.
So, so we wanted to reorganize that to where it's.
That's, I had found two different.
Yeah, I know.
I found three.
Yeah.
One was put in, in twenty-one, one was put in in twenty, and one was, the last one was put in twenty-three.
And some weren't signed, some were, you know.
In sync.
Anyway, we were just going through that and kind of cleaning that up and, so it's more user-friendly, especially when you're getting new board members on board. What else?
Foundation.
Um, foundation, as a board for regular business, didn't meet in December. Because we've been working on, um, committee work for the Daddy Daughter Red Carpet Ball. Um, that will be held at the Michael Senior Center, we haven't. We went and looked and figured what we thought.
And it is.
Oh, so much more to decorate.
So are you doing in the gym or in the Michael's room?
In the gym, um, as Randy has mentioned, there will be a limousine, there will be a ticket charge.
Right.
Um, which includes the limousine ride. The dance and the, and the refreshments, we're also providing what I'll call D-dads, maybe that's not the right official word. But tiaras that could be bought or flowers that could be bought and, you know.
Pictures.
Pictures, photographer. What we're trying to do is make it a very special night, you know, um, different from prom.
Is it gonna be like a dinner or anything or just, or nerves or something?
Just snacky stuff, yeah, you know, punch bowl, cookies, that kind of thing, I don't know, we haven't gotten that far.
Daddy's gonna beg. Daddy's not home.
As I made the correction, we want. Anybody to be able to come, so we're looking at a scholarship program, if someone doesn't. Has six daughters and they want all six to come and can't afford it, then, you know, whatever. Uh, we're trying to make it available to those that, uh, couldn't afford it. Um, we're looking for community support, um, everyone we've spoken to has been very excited. To have an event, you know, something for. That, you know, will bring the community together, so we're, we're excited about that. The purpose is a fundraiser for the foundation for scholarships, um. The foundation is planning about for fundraising events. Um, which, um, couple in the summer, you know, and so forth. Trying to make them more community, um, oriented. Rather than door knocking and, hey, do you want to contribute some money? Which none of us like, so.
No.
So, yeah, um, we're gonna need lots of help. And setting up.
Setting up? If we have dresses due, where do we take them?
I don't know.
I've been taking all of mine over to the house, I still, I still, when I went home at Chris and I, I brought my daughters back and then. Lily informed me she needed, Lily informed me she needed another one for winter formal last weekend, so I. Bought her another two hundred dollar dress, so I texted her back and said, by the way, mail me that dress, I need it for the daddy-daughter. She said, okay. I know, she is very tiny, uh, so they're all over at the house, so any dresses that, I put some on layaway or back at the Army. Surplus stores, is that what it is, and, um, Spearfish, oh, what is it?
Goodwill?
No, it wasn't.
Salvation Army?
Salvation Army had a bunch of them up there, so I put six of them back up there that I'm gonna go back and get. Well, I, I don't want any little girl to feel like. They can't go because they don't have a dress, I think as grownups, it is our responsibility not to see a young girl cry because she can't go to a dance. Because, one, she doesn't have the shoes or she doesn't have a dress because their parents can't afford it. I think being pillars of the community, it's our responsibility to make sure these little girls. Have a dress or shoes or a way to get to the dance, I really do.
We aren't limiting it by age, if you want to come with your hundred-year-old father, life is good, you know, so it's, it's any age.
Right.
Is that we've said.
Is it a DJ or a, we, we do have a DJ in music?
Yeah.
It won't be live.
No. We do not have a band.
That's what you're asking, no. DJ, you never know.
Having a band is stated.
I've seen a couple of them over at the long-term care, I'm.
But at this point, no, we're, we're planning a DJ, so.
Little steps.
What am I forgetting? That we talked about.
I think it sounds fabulous.
Chocolate fountain?
Oh, yes.
Chocolate fountain, yeah, yes, uh. Kim has been an instrumental part of organizing this and so has Charlotte, so we have to give credit where credit is due as well.
Just like I said before.
We took, I brought my tape measure and we measured.
Yep, we went in today and, yeah, I probably actually have some tables. We walked in, I'm like, oh, they've got tables on here and still room for a dance floor, so.
I, I think this is an opportunity to bring the community together and show them that we are real. And we do feel for the people out there that's underserved, I mean, I really do.
So, in terms of, you know, the community support, if, if people want to, um, provide money for some tickets, you know, um. For someone that needs it, that kind of thing. Decorations.
Yeah, we're looking at restaurants to give a, a discount.
Would you come up with the price? Of the tickets?
The tickets are twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
This year.
Is that for, for the daddy and daughter?
Yes.
Yeah, both, both, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
More to come, I guess, if they were.
I think it's gonna be really good, I really do.
And we didn't meet for ethics. Now, did we?
We won't go till March.
That's what I thought, did we? I don't know.
All runs together.
Okay, I just saw the future, it says February seventh to twenty-sixth. May, special district candidate filing. March twenty-third is the dinner, the dog, daddy, daughter, red carpet ball. Seventh is the district elections and the eighteenth is the W H A C E O spring meeting. So you know.
That'll be our brainwave then.
So is there. Guys, I might invite, but I sent out a quarterly joint conference.
Or by Tuesday.
Or Tuesday, but it could be reoccurring now, so every quarter. It'll remind you and me that it's that month is the joint conference.
Eight AM, right, Kim?
Yes, I am, what's the date?
Twenty-second?
Second?
Twenty-third.
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 This coming Tuesday.
I have the motion that we leave our regular meeting and go into executive session for personnel.
Do I have a second? Okay.